Would you? Will you do the roll call please, or is it you or Steve who would do it?
Go ahead, Brian.
Sure. Let's see, Ms. Langgallis?
Here.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Present.
Mr. Bryce?
Present.
Ms. Lankowski?
Here.
Mr. Schulman?
Here.
And Ms. Wells?
Yeah.
Look like Anna just popped, she looks like she's rebooting, so she should join us in a minute. But you have a quorum.
Okay, so the first matter before this is twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight special appropriation. City of Norwalk, ninety-eight South Main Street. It's a special appropriation request for five hundred and eighty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. It's special capital appropriation funds and to the Recreation Parks Department. The development and construction of the Norwalk Community Recreation Center at ninety-eight South Main Street. I think Alan Low, Alan Low is here for the city.
Um, good evening, everyone. Um, excuse me. Yeah, as you know, you, uh, the planning is only commissioned has seen this before, this project before. And we are currently under construction. Uh, the interior building has been, um, demolished, and during the process, we discovered some issues with the exterior wall. Uh, the total project cost is about fifteen million dollars. About two thirds of it, which is about ten million dollars company of state and the federal government, as which included about six million dollar worth of offer money. The city contribution to this project is around five million dollars right now. Uh, so as we demodulate the building, we find condition that's very unusual. Because when we look at exterior brickwork, all the joints are tight. But once we demodulate the interior walls and remove the old insulation, uh, we found this water moisture damage from, from the exterior wall. And there's a full report as part of the agenda package uh, that shows some of the issue we encounter. So you actually get from inside the building, you actually see daylight through the brickwork. So the, the, the corrective measures include repointing the entire building. Uh, as brick wall goes, there's a masonry tieback to tie the exterior brick onto the structure of the building. Traditionally, these things are made of, uh, uh, galvanized steel. Uh, but the governments still do rot away through the years. And so all of these are determined by the structural engineer to be not safe. So we had to put all new ones, uh, all new, uh, uh, brick tieback. The same time on the east wall, we are going to demodulate that wall completely. Uh, because we're adding a new gym to it, so we, we don't want to spend money fixing something that we don't, we technically don't need because it will be, becomes an interior wall. Uh, and, and we're going to put a spray foam insulation in the building. Um, and a few other items. So there's a detail at part your, 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 my, my backend material to the commission. And they also outlined the price, the conditions, the pricing with pictures and all that stuff. So again, the total amount is about five hundred and sixty-eight or eighty-six thousand dollars. And we're requesting a special appropriation and we found an account from the, the project that we finished for, for the, uh, school projects that we finished. So, so we're not adding additional debt to the city. Overall capital debt to the city of Norwalk. So in, in some, that's what is in front of you tonight. Uh, went to be, uh, by estimate on Monday, and they are supportive of this. And we're subject to this commission review and, and recommendation. It's going to the, uh, Finance Committee of Common Council tomorrow night. And assuming that they will recommend approval, then we'll go to the full common council next week. Uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I want to note that, uh, Commissioner Williams has, has arrived and is here. Um, and also that Diana and Anna will both be seated for this matter. And for all other matters for the evening as well. Do I hear a motion to approve this?
I just have one quick question, uh, before we jump to a motion. Uh, uh, is demolition complete? Is there a chance of like uncovering any other issues at the site?
Um, on the interior building, no. Uh, on the exterior, we actually did some, there's some right part which is behind it. We're building a new addition, which is a gym, uh, gym addition to the building. Um, they are soil that's considered mostly of, we call it polluted soil. Polluted soil you can leave on site. Uh, contaminated soil, we need to remove from site. So potential risk, it's a, it's a, essentially it's so.
But, um,
Go ahead. So, so when you ask about potential risks, uh, that's, that's the kind of as time goes on, the more than known will be known. So this, so we are subject to approval of this five hundred thousand dollar, we are, we will maintain a four hundred thousand dollar worth of owner contingency beyond that to protect that. Uh, we kept, that's about three percent of the total project cost. So a project like this, we typically like to have five hundred thousand dollars. But the same time, th- this project, when we started this project, we were tied with money, so we only have about three percent. But this issue didn't come up, so now we have to request special appropriation. So to answer your, fully answer your question, yes, we will have our four hundred seven thousand dollars remaining to cover un- un- unknown conditions and change orders potentially. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any question?
Galen, please. Um, thank you. Hi, Mr. Lowe, thanks for coming. Um, so my question is kind of a follow-up to Chapin's, um, I think we already approved some extra funds for this and are there any projects that you're working on that if you do run into more problems that might have some leftover resources rather than coming to us?
Um, the Nick, next project that we, we are looking at right now, it's such a school construction project. It's an HVAC project that we're looking at. It's very unusual bidding environment right now, uh, because these HVAC, uh, heating, ventilation, air conditioning projects, uh, these projects funded by the state at sixty percent. Um, the state had issued a number of grants for these projects. So in terms of the industry wise, the Connecticut, uh, mechanical, uh, contractors, they are quite busy. So the competitiveness in, in the marketplace, it's, it's not very competitive because it was lineup work already kind of thing. So we are getting very high pricing for mechanical, uh, equipment renovation work. So we are, we are challenged with these budget that we have. Uh, that's one risk that I'm looking at right now, and we got this in and uh, they are substantially higher, but we're trying to reduce scope and we find ways to bring the project down as much as we can. So when you ask the question, it's total and related to this project. The same time overall, the, the next challenge I have financially with major city project is actually school HVAC projects.
Thank you. Does anybody else have a question for Mr. Lowe? Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, wonderful. Just, is there a second?
All second.
Okay, Chapin's second. Uh, I think we should do a roll call on this. And as I said, both Diana and Anna are, Diana and Anna are seated.
All right, uh, Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Ms. Tabashnik?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yes.
That's unanimous.
Uh, I, I didn't want to say anything because I didn't want to influence the vote, uh, in any way. Uh, Steve or Brian, correct me if I'm wrong. But even if we had turned this down, uh, a two-thirds vote of the common council still would have approved it.
Yeah, and that's true for eight twenty fours as well.
Okay, well, we'll launch the next title on our agenda. Uh, it is twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five camp. Robert E. Stevenson, thirty-six Dock Road. Demolish an existing house and construct a new single-family residence with associated improvements adjacent to tidal waters and wetlands. Uh, is who is here, uh, representing Mr. Stevens and thirty-six Dock Road?
Hello, my name is Tom Nelson, professional engineer with McCord Engineering. Um, good evening. Our office prepared the site development plan for the project. I will share my screen. And let's see. All right, hopefully you're able to see that.
Yep.
Okay, great. Um, so, uh, the site is located at thirty-six Dock Road. It's a slightly larger than a half acre piece of property um, in the CD one S zone. Um, this is Village Creek to the west. Uh, you can see our location here. You can see the exit, you can, you can kind of make out the existing house in between the trees here. There's a lot of very large trees on the property. Um, it's a steep site. It's, uh, it's a, it's a rocky site. Um, this is the existing condition survey for the property. Um, you can see there's a driveway that comes up steeply from Dock Road. There's an existing detached garage that's sort of built into the hillside. Uh, there's an existing house that's sort of elevated, uh, with a, uh, retaining wall, a, a, a short retaining wall about two feet high. And then this is an existing, uh, yard area where the existing septic system is located. Um, what we've proposed, um, sorry. Uh, this is a, a quick, uh, color highlighted, uh, drawing of, of our site development plan for the project. The existing garage will remain, the existing driveway will remain. Uh, and what is proposed is a new house in approximately the same location as where the existing house is. So this dash line here is the existing house, and you can see what's proposed in the, uh, in the, in the burgundy highlight. Um, and to the south, uh, we kind of maintain that existing lawn area. Um, the, uh, this is the proposed septic system. There will be a new septic system on the property. Um, and we've also proposed a, uh, a new stormwater detention system to the rear of the house to capture stormwater runoff from the new, uh, from the new building and allow that infiltrate into the ground. We've captured the first, uh, one point three inches of runoff, which is the water quality volume for the area. Um, the all the proposed work is outside of the flood zone. Uh, these red lines, this is the AE flood zone at elevation thirteen. This is the VE flood zone at elevation seventeen. The first floor of our house is way up at elevation thirty. So everything is outside of the flood zone. Uh, we worked hard to try to minimize the amount of earthwork on the site with the slopes. It really is a, a challenging site to do much uh, earthwork out there. So we did need to do a little bit of filling, about a foot of filling for the septic. Uh, we did do a little bit of filling for the detention system in the back. But beyond that, we're really trying to match the existing grades. The much of the house is on a slab, a small amount on the crawl space. This portion of the house is actually, uh, second floor only elevated over the grade. Um, so we're trying to really match those existing grades. Um, and minimize the amount of soil disturbance on the site. Um, we also worked really hard to preserve the existing, uh, mature trees. There are some trees, I think there's eleven total trees that will be coming down. They're really close, uh, to the, even the existing house, much less the proposed, as you saw in that aerial. Um, but for the most part, we did try really hard to preserve uh, a nice, about a forty-foot wide wooded buffer along Village Creek. Uh, trees along, uh, the property lines here and here, those will all be saved. And I think provide, uh, you know, additional buffers for, uh, for the coastal resources. Um, I think that's, uh, that's a quick summary for me and happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? For Mr. Nelson? Does anybody, nobody has any questions? Okay, in that case, uh, do I hear a motion? I don't hear one. Would you like to make one?
I'll make the motion, Galen.
Now, second.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you. And again, Diana and Anna are seated. Uh, can we do a roll call?
Amelia, do you want to pull up, uh, the resolution quick?
Yes, I will.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Nothing too exciting in this resolution. Standard stuff, um, compliance with the plans submitted, getting sign-offs from other departments, erosion and sedimentation controls, and that, uh, everything be zoning compliant and any changes come to staff.
Okay, does anybody have any questions about the, um, resolution? Okay, then I think we're ready to move forward to a vote. Steve, can you do or a roll call? Or Brian do a roll call?
Sure. Um, Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Ms. Tabashnik?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Okay, leave unanimous.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We will move on to a public hearing. Our first public hearing is, uh, twenty twenty-five dash fifteen. R slash S P Norwalk Center LLC and the Auto Collective, ten Norton Place. Uh, it's a zoning regulation text amendment application to amend Article four and Article nine to create a car club use within the FD, uh, type in LI zone district and special permit application for a one hundred and thirty-seven thousand square foot car club within an existing building. Attorney Suchi, I believe you're here to represent the car club?
Yes, I am, Madam Chairwoman.
Good. Then proceed.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. For the record, I'm Ms. Suchi, partner at Carmody Torrent Sandak and Hennessy. Our office is ten fifty-five Washington Boulevard in Stamford. And I represent the owner of the property, Norwalk Center LLC, owner and applicant, and also the Auto Collective, who is the co-applicant before you tonight on the text amendment and special permit applications. Present for tonight's meeting is all, are the following. Akiva Cobray, who is a representative of the owner, Norwalk Center LLC. Andrew Pister, he was, he is the principal of the Auto Collective. Eric Linkquist, professional art engineer with Ty and Bond. Grant Wright of Kenneth Borison Architects, and Ethan Shkowsky, our traffic engineer. Just by way of some background information, the application for text amendment and special permit was filed on February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Neighbors within a hundred feet of the property were notified of the submission by certified letter on February twenty-eighth. Neighbors were then notified of tonight's public hearing by certified letter on April twenty-second, twenty-second, and a packet containing those domestic green return receipt cards, copies of mailings that were returned to us, and then information from the U.S. Postal Service tracking those letters that we have not received, either the letter or the green card. That packet was delivered to staff this morning. And lastly, a sign was posted on the property in accordance with your regulations on April twenty-third to advise the public of tonight's hearing. The applicant, as has been mentioned, is Norwalk Center LLC and the Auto Collective. The property is ten Norton Place in East Norwalk, District Three, Lot forty, excuse me, District Three, Block forty, Lot seventeen. This is a condominiumized parcel. There is a parcel A and a parcel B. Parcel A is the large piece, it's about thirty-three acres with the former Northrop Grumman building of six hundred and thirty thousand square feet. And the other parcel B is a smaller one, uh, that is about five acres, and it has the data center building that was approved in twenty thirteen and subsequently constructed. Also on that parcel B, there is a small test building of nine thousand square feet. That's a remnant from the years when Northrop Grumman owned the property. The zoning today is SDLI. It had previously been LI two. Prior to that, it was restricted industrial and research and development. As is indicated on the, excuse me, the survey that's in front of you on the screen, trying to get this out of me. The property is bounded to the west by Norton Place, to the north by an accessway and land of, um, the Halsted apartment complex further to the east. North of that accessway is Connecticut I ninety-five. To the, to the east of, uh, the property is, as I said, the Halsted apartment complex, which was originally Avalon. And then to the south is a combination of land owned by Corville Nurseries. That was a subdivision that you saw last year, carving off a three-acre parcel. And as well as land that is currently occupied under a temporary easement by Connecticut Department of Transportation in connection with the Walk Bridge. And further south is the Metro North Railroad, uh, tracks northbound and southbound. And, um, that's generally where the property is located. So the, the proposal tonight before you deals with both text amendment and special permit. It is a proposal to occupy a portion of the six hundred and thirty-five thousand square foot Norton Building. Um, with the car club, and I'll get into that in just a minute. But just by way of background as well on Norton and Grumman, as you know, the Norton Building, as we all affectionately call it, was the headquarters of Northrop Grumman, the national defense contractor for many, many years. When it was in its heyday, it had three shifts of workers working, uh, with three thousand employees per shift. They were manufacturing office and other uses on site. It was also the site in more recent time of Talk Tours, Pepperidge Farm, and Catherine Gibbs. Um, that's just a general overview and background of the property. Currently, motor vehicle storage is permitted by special permit in the SDLI zones. You may ask, so why are we here? After evaluating what our use is and talking with staff, we thought it appropriate that we should come up with a definition for what our use is so that it clearly defines what is proposed, what is not proposed, what would be permitted and what would not be permitted, rather than come in with an application strictly for motor vehicle storage and expect you and the staff and us to, um, accept that the other component parts are, would be accessory to motor vehicle storage. So that's how it developed into a two-pronged application. So the first application before you is a text amendment. Number one, it creates the car club use and defines it. And it is defined as a membership-based organization where classic, vintage, and other passenger motor vehicles are stored and displayed inside a building, including on racks, along with accessory space for members and member-sponsored events, along with members lounge and club space, which may include the service of food and alcohol. Outdoor storage of and repairs to vehicles shall be prohibited. That is the definition of car club that we have submitted in connection with the text amendment application. There are also revisions to Table four point three point nine point A to allow a car club in this zone by special permit. There is a modification to the parking regulations to address what the parking ratio would be for the car club, and that would be one space per five thousand square feet of usable floor area, plus, plus one space for per employee for the vehicle's storage component. And then the accessory event lounge and club space, we've identified as one space per five hundred square feet of usable floor area, which is so similar to existing ratios in the regulations today. Uh, lastly, staff had suggested identifying live music as an accessory use in the car, as, as part of a car club. So that's the text amendment that has been submitted and the reasons for the text amendment. Secondly, we've submitted a special permit application because, as we indicated above, the car club would be a use permitted by special permit. So the proposed car club would occupy approximately one hundred and thirty-seven thousand square feet. About eighty-five thousand of it would be for the storage of classic, vintage, and other motor vehicles, either um, one or with a tiered two, a two-top, two-deck tier system. There's approximately twenty thousand square feet of event space for gatherings, movies, parties, things of that nature, either club-generated or member-generated. An additional twenty-six thousand square feet for car club member space, and then there's some lounge space that is also part of the proposed demise premises. Um, as indicated in our application, the vehicles to be stored at the club would be driven to the site by their owners. They wouldn't arrive by common carrier or by eighteen-wheelers or the similar types of car carriers you see on I ninety-five. Uh, they would, there would be no storage of vehicles outside that defeats the very purpose of the car club. And there would be no automobile work permitted on the vehicles, either inside or on the outside. And some questions have been asked about the events, and I'm just going to give a brief overview, and then I will have Mr. Pistor go into more detail. But generally, we anticipate some events on weekends during the month. Maximum attendance is about a hundred fifty. However, the space could handle events that would be slightly larger than that. And from time to time, that event space could handle an event of about three hundred to three hundred fifty people. Again, the events would be organized either by the Auto Collective itself for members or events by members for themselves, their families and friends. For example, uh, perhaps the Auto Collective might organize an event to watch the Formula One race, which just took place in Miami this past week. Or to watch Formula One race in Las Vegas in November, or perhaps the Le Mans Grand Prix in Monaco, or the Indy five hundred, or the Kentucky Derby. Those are the kind of events that we anticipate. Um, having a hundred fifty people, maybe some larger events, and a- again, Andrew can get into that in just a minute. Uh, there's also a, a, a desire on the part of Mr. Pistor to work closely with the Norwalk Public School System to develop a program within which students can learn how to design, create, and then compete with these designed one-twentieth scale Formula One cars. And that's a combination of math, aerodynamics, uh, physics, um, and a lot of other STEM skills that we hope to generate in this, in this facility from time to time. When you heard this application before, we explained to you what the anticipated hours of operation and employees would be. Hours generally are sixty hours a week, Sunday from ten to three, Monday through Thursday from twelve to eight, Friday from noon to eleven. It's not a facility that is open twenty-four hours a day. We anticipate nine full-time employees and three part-time employees. To date, we've received the sign-offs from Department of Health, Transportation, Mobility and Parking, Water Department, Fire Department, and today, the Department of Public Works, Works issued its sign-off as well. That gives basically a general overview of what we propose, how the space is to be used. Uh, we think the amendment is a rational and reasonable one, and it addresses a need that exists in the community. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to, hmm, Eric Linkquist to walk you through the site plan, followed by, um, Grant Wright, and then Ethan Shkowsky, and bringing up the end would be Mister Pistor to answer any, to explain some additional comments that I elaborate on some comments I made and any, any, any other information that he might like to, um, to add, and then answer any questions that you have. So at this point, if you would indulge me, if Eric could come on, he can move forward with the next phase of this proposal.
Uh, good evening. For the record, my name is Eric Linkquist. I'm a senior associate at Time Bond and a licensed engineer in the state of Connecticut. Um, for my portion, I'll be talking about this, the civil portion of the site and then the site development nature of the project. Uh, as you'll see, it's fairly limited. Um, this mostly relates to the things that Elizabeth just discussed, as well as some of the things Grant might get into about the building and the interiors. But for the most part, the site is fairly limited in terms of what the design is. Um, as you can see, the blue outline here is where the Auto Collective will be located within the building. Um, using up the Prepperidge Farm facility and some of the office and manufacturing space that was within the existing building. Um, the parking will be on the north side of the building for this, as well as, um, essentially the entire north side of the building. And, uh, if I zoom in on this, we'll get into just the, the site changes, which you'll see are very, very limited. So as I zoom in here, um, for the event space, we're going to utilize the existing entrance that's there and, and restructure it so that we can have some accessible parking over here. Um, currently, the accessible parking is out here, but there are steps and it doesn't work as well. Um, so, so we figured adding additional parking over here would be good for the project and, and for the meeting regulations. Um, in addition to that, we will also be having a, a new ramp that comes up to the building. I mean, I use the word ramp just because it slopes up to the building since the finished floor is higher. But this will just look like a paved driveway. It's not going to be structural in any sense. It's just going to be pavement on, on soil. Uh, and that'll be ramped up to these two new doors that'll come into an area that will have hand washing for the vehicles as they come in before they go into storage. Um, there'll be an oil grit separator, which I'll show you in a minute outside for collecting that runoff from the, the hand washing, and that'll be permitted with the state. Um, we'll also be providing a small, this is a very low-level retaining wall through here, just to make up the grades as this slopes up over here. There is currently an entrance to the building here, so there'll still be that connectivity, but some of the sidewalks to the side here are going to be eliminated. There is an existing entrance over here due to the ramp that we'll also be getting rid of. So, like I said, the, the changes are fairly minimal. Um, we'll also be adding a bike rack over here to meet compliance and show that as well. And there'll be a site identification sign located just at the bottom of the ramp here, just identifying the auto club and and just essentially where it is. So those are the basic site components. Uh, as I go forward, um, actually, let me go to the the revised plan that we just submitted and got approved from Department of Public Works. So underground, um, but also fairly limited. We will be increasing impervious coverage on the site ever so slightly. Um, as I noted before, this ramp coming in here will be paved. It's currently mostly impervious, our pervious area. There are some sidewalks, as I noted before, that are in here that'll be ripped up and replaced by the pavement. So there will be a net increase in impervious coverage. So in order to attenuate the peaks and the volumes for that, we've provided subsurface infiltration over here uh with an outlet control structure and a water quality structure. So the water coming down this ramp, the runoff will go into the water quality structure as a form of pretreatment. It'll go into this diversion manhole to bring the runoff into here that will infiltrate it into the ground. Anything past that in the peaks would then be bypassed and go out to the catch basin into the existing system and then go down to the south, which you can't see on here, but would go down to the railroad. Uh, culverts that are there uh which the site currently goes to. Uh, minor erosion control measures, inlet protections within each of the structures in the surrounding area. As I said, there's not a lot of earthwork being done here, so there's not a need for a a significant amount of uh modifications. Um, but that's the general layout of the site. I was asked also to address a concern about um parking spaces that are in the zoning table. Uh, previously, uh, this is the uh MTA application we had before. Uh, we did count this area over here as existing spaces before. This is now, if I go to the aerial, you'll see this is where the landscape uh is now, so those spaces aren't there currently, so we're not counting them in this calculation. One thing that was an oversight on our part in the last application is the area south here that is currently being used by DOT. As you'll note, we didn't use that space as part of our calculation before. Under the uh revised applica, uh, under this application, we have, excuse me, as I roll around these plans, there's quite a few. We have allocated, there's, there was existing two hundred and thirty spaces down here. So those spaces have been reallocated in. Um, that was what was on the original applications we did prior. And in addition to that, there were a couple of minor mistakes we had made on the prior plan, some miscounts on these two lots that we've corrected on here. Some striping got missed, so that that we're off by a couple of spaces. So making those revisions and updating the table, the current table is the most accurate. Uh, the historic allocation is for the existing buildings, spaces that are vacant that are remaining. And we've updated the uh car club uses as well as the trend, the MTA use and the data center in here, which are the prior approved numbers, uh, which gives us what we're expecting for total parking on the site. Uh, and I believe that covers uh everything that I need to present. So if there's any questions, by all, by all means, feel free to ask. Otherwise, I can pass it along.
I have a one question for you. Um. Are there uh parking spaces that will be set aside on this site specifically for the car club use?
Yes, those, those spaces are on the north side of the building here. Um, these immediate spaces here, which is forty-one and thirteen, those are going to be the day-to-day uses. And the events, uh, although we talked about there being event spaces, they start to use the seventy-seven spaces over here as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Lindquist?
Yeah, uh, quick one. Miss, Mr. Lindquist, um, how far, yeah, if if you've measured, is the event space from uh the closest dwelling?
The closest what?
Dwelling, the closest house.
Uh, closest house? Uh, I don't know if I can give you an exact number on that, um, but the closest houses are probably over on Norton Place or, yeah, Norman Place would be the closest, and I'm not sure how many feet that is, but it's quite a few. Or maybe across the highway. That might be actually a little closer, but it's across I ninety-five.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Lindquist?
Okay, if, no, no, I have a question.
Excuse me.
What about the, what about the apartment building?
That's on Norton Place. That's what I was talking about.
It's off screen. You can't even see the apartment. It's, there it is.
Okay, so what what I was concerned about is a hundred guests coming to an event at at most occurrences. And that you do have, you know, this is a residential neighborhood. What type of um speed um calming measures will be put into place?
There's a traffic component. The presentation will be after me. Um, so that might be addressed, that'll be addressed with those. So I just ask you to hold on with that question.
Okay, thank you.
Keep in mind, there is a traffic light at Strawberry Hill in Norton. So if someone's, and there is another traffic light at Norton in Winfield. So that calms traffic coming in off Strawberry Hill. And then folks who are arriving to the site will either most likely come Triangle Street, come into the site, make a right at the most northern entrance, and then come into the, into the property. You have to make a a pretty good left turn to then access that, the accessway, and then make a right turn into, either go straight ahead off that accessway into the seventy-seven space lot or continue around on that shared accessway into the lot directly in front of the entrance to the car club facility. Same thing is true if you come, if you're coming south on Strawberry Hill or north on Strawberry Hill and come in, make a right on Norton Place. You're, you've come to a light, then you have to make a left turn into the site or a right, a left turn into the site into Norton, and you have to maneuver through that two-lane roadway. It's, it's not a straightaway by any means.
Right.
Keep in mind, folks who are storing their vehicles here, the purpose is to store them, these classic um vintage and and in some measures, rather expensive vehicles, store them in a safe and secure location. So I don't anticipate that they would be using Norton Place or the accessway into the Norton site as a straightaway to to do.
Oh, no, no, I wasn't, I wasn't concerned about the vehicles that will be in storage. I'm talking about the events. People who come to the events.
Sure, but the same thing would be true for them. There are two traffic lights that serve as cat, traffic calming measures. And then there, there's maneuvering that needs to take place once you come into the site, that it's, it's not a straightaway for individuals to to speed into the side or speed out of it. Um, and there's ample parking in front of the site or the seventy-seven spaces for a hundred people to come. There's seventy-seven and then another forty. And there's also parking that's in that, the uh, the the lot that is open between the Norton Building and Norton Place, that there is several hundred spaces there for additional overflow.
What are the weekend hours again? The weekend's hours of operation?
The weekend hours are generally, you're with me a second. It's um Sunday, ten AM to three PM generally, and Friday, Saturday, noon to about eleven PM. And all events take place inside. There is no outside events. There is no, there are no tents. It's, if they're having an event, it's all inside. It's like any other event taking place within a building. People have to come in, doors have to be shut. People, if members of the public are concerned about noise, there is a city noise ordinance. We have to abide by the noise ordinance and the decile levels at the receptor properties on Norton Place, which is residential, receptor properties across the highway and also on the other side of the railroad tracks, not to mention the Halsted um apartment complex on the far end beyond the the data center.
Right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. Um, I'm not sure if it's more for staff or for you guys. Um, but the proposal is to allow this use in the SD light industrial zone. Are there any other parcels in that zone currently that we think could theoretically host a car club, or is this something that's very much unique to this property?
Well, the SDLI zone exists throughout the city in limited areas. There is a pocket of it in South Norwalk. Um, I think that's, and that's generally where it is. There's perhaps some smaller pockets up main, pockets up Main Avenue. But to to have a car club and to store vehicles inside, you'd need a rather substantial space just to get the vehicles in, to store them properly and to be able to maneuver them from outside into the inside. Could it happen elsewhere? It could, but it would have to be a, a facility and a building that would be able to accommodate not only storing them, but maneuvering the vehicles in and out. And if there is another site in town that is appropriate, it would have to go through the special permit process that you as a commission uh would review and you can impose conditions and we would, that location would have to meet the standards of review set forth in the special permit departments. And there would be a mandatory public hearing.
I, I, I wonder if this type of use is unlikely to fit into other SDLI properties, particularly due to the the maneuvering of vehicles that you talked about and all of that. To what degree this might start approaching spot zoning? I'm wondering if staff could speak to that.
Well, yeah, but I mean, you can talk, Attorney Mark Brants, who's worked with us on the zoning regs, basically said there really is no legal thing, legal uh entity like considered spot zoning. I don't, I I wouldn't think that would apply anyway, even if if you were going that direction. I can think of some properties in South Norwalk that could accommodate something like this. You might not get one, you know, maybe the same size. I, I, that's hard to say depending on what's available within a building, but I know like some sites in North, South Norwalk that could work for something like this. And potentially even in uh East Norwalk, there might be a site or two that still might work.
I'm getting the idea.
Any other questions at this point, or can we turn it over to Grant Wright?
Uh, I have a question.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Okay, so um would the vehicles themselves be entering the building from the the north also?
Yes.
So there'll be, there would be no access from the the south side into the this uh particular uh uh use?
There really wouldn't be any reason to, number one, and number two, there are other users on the south side and the east side that we would not be able, we wouldn't be able to. As you know, Corville Nurseries is on the south. So it doesn't make a lot of sense for the vehicles to come around Corville to go in between some of the structures that exist on the south side of the building, then circle around where Metro North is supposed, is going to be uh occupying space, come around on the driveway on the eastern side of the building, since those parking lots that you see right now are, that are empty. That is where Metro North is supposed to be uh storing some of the materials for which it received approvals last year. So the the best and most effective and most efficient way is for someone to come in on Norton. They make a right at the northernmost
Right.
entrance, come either straight ahead and park in that first lot or come around the at the accessway and pull right into the parking lot in front of the entrance where they then pull directly into the building with a new entrance to be created, so they can do just that. They won't even have to get out of the car and leave it in that parking lot. They would pull right into the new, into the building, into the new design space.
Okay, thank you. I asked that because we did have some concern from people who live on the other side of the the railroad. And one other thing that you did mention, Attorney Sachi, was that all events would be inside? Where I looked, looked at the number of events or the nature of the events, there were a couple that I'm not familiar with, like a slot car race. Is a track going to be inside for the slot car races?
I'm going to leave that to Mr. Pistor to answer. But events are, are to take place inside. Will there be perhaps an event from time to time when some, when some classic cars may be displayed in the parking lot for people to look at, mu- much like the, the car show that is down at at Cat Pasture Beach, but on a smaller scale? Perhaps there may be a day when the, when Ferraris may be in the parking lot just uh as an event. But it's the anticipation and the practicality is that these vehicles are there to be stored inside. Um, if there's a, an event from time to time, I, I won't say that there won't be, but the vast majority of events are inside, and that's why we're suggesting event space as well.
Right, and and my last question re- related to this is that there was also some mention of um racing training for um students that would also be inside?
That is a program that currently exists in the uh Formula One world where um STEM re, STEM programs um are introduced in the school system. I would suspect it would be on a club basis, but again, Andrew has dealt with one of the representatives of Norwalk High on this, where it it's kind of like the robotic league in South Norwalk. Teams would get together at the high school level. They would design and build and then race these, race their designs, but they are one twentieth the size of a car. Uh, but I'll have Andrew explain that a little bit more, and that's in its infancy stage, but would be something that we'd like to do to not only engage the community um with the, the concept, but also it's another venue for young people in the community to have something to do.
Okay, thank you very much. That was a good explanation. Thanks.
Sure. Anything else right now? Okay, Grant, could you come on and ex, and show the interior and elevation, please?
Thank you, Liz. Uh, good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Grant Wright. I'm from Kenneth Porst and Architects. I'm a an architect and project manager uh with the firm. And I will share my screen. Can everybody see that okay?
Oh, oh, there it goes.
Oops, here it goes. About that.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Uh, so I'll just start off where Eric left off, um, basically showing the portion of the building uh that's going to be used along the uh, the ground floor only. Uh, so everybody can see where this accessway comes in and the parking lots are based on where the entrance of the hand wash and the uh, the club spaces will be. So with that in mind, here is the overall floor plan. This is the portion of the building that will be taken over. Uh, so that path would come along the top of this to the north. The driveway or the um, the uh proposed ramp would be in this location here to the hand wash. This is the old Pepperidge Farm area and which would become an event space uh with an entryway here. I'll zoom in a little bit more. Uh, so the cars would come in through this hand wash space into the vehicle storage area. And then you'd have the main entrance to the building, which would be right here. Uh, you'd also have cars on display uh in the entry area. Which would come over to the club space with some of the existing amenities that are uh located in the building. And then you have a a platinum lounge here over in the corner with a bathroom. So all access or the, the space already has uh existing means of egress uh to the front and rear of the building. Uh, but the cars, uh, to answer the question again, was that the, would be just through the uh the north's end of the building through this hand wash space, so those cars can come in, be circulated through each of these racks and then either be brought to the event space for display or to the front for display. Uh, I also have a few renderings, so you can see, get a better, I understanding of what this will look like. So here's an aerial of the space. This is existing. This is the north. This is from the north looking towards the building. Ninety-five would be behind us. Uh, this is the Pepperidge Farms area with the new proposed ax, uh entrance to the event space. Here is the sign that we were discussing earlier and the ramp that would go up to this double garage door into the hand wash space before entering behind into the storage area. And this is the main, this is currently uh, an existing entrance uh will be cleaned up, landscaped. Um, and that will enter into that club space and the platinum lounge is located over here in the corner. So here's just a view from a bird's eye view. I also have one from more along the parking lot, so you can get an idea of what this would look like from looking up to the ramp in the entryway. Here's the main entrance view. Then we have a couple interior as you come into the entrance area. This is the idea. Um, so you can see there'll be a glass wall or separation wall between the club space or entryway into the uh, the car storage area. Here is a, a view of with, what that car storage area would look like with the lifts a double height. I believe we have two hundred and four spaces. And then here is a, a view of just the club area, the lounge area looking into, uh, again, separating the, the two spaces where the events might take place and um the car viewing can be, be seen from. But that is pretty much the uh, the layout of the uh, the plan. So if you have any questions, I'm open to them.
Okay, if no questions for Grant?
Yep, Ms. Lindkowsky.
I'm sorry, but um, could you give me the definition of a member-sponsored event with this? Involve a member at all events?
Well, the, the space is not, the event space is not geared toward having someone who is, is not a member or the club itself hosting an event. It's, so it's not a hosting an event. It's, so it's not a um, just a, a member of the general public can come to, to ownership and say, I'd like to have a fiftieth birthday party here and not have any connection to this club. They, it would have, they would have to be a member. Or the member would have to sponsor that event. Or the club would have to hold event, the event itself. It's not a venue for anyone uh, to be able to rent for their own individual activities. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
It's very similar to other clubs. Other clubs, they have club events. Members can um, can reserve space for their own events. But they, they aren't necess, they aren't um, just open to the public as event space that anyone can use. There has to be a connection to either the club itself or the members.
Thank you.
Okay, Ethan, if you wouldn't mind?
Ethan Chakovsky, I'm a professional engineer at State Connecticut, uh, professional traffic operations agent here. As well, um, so we prepared a traffic letter report uh, for the application. Uh, we uh, looked at the proposed use, uh, the surrounding area and then also produce traffic studies included for this uh, site. In particular, the MTA application. Which was recently created by travel, big stuff in traffic study as well. Um, the car club use, uh, traditionally when we do traffic generation uh, models, what we use is the Institute of Transportation Engineer uh, published data. They, they collect a variety of databases and traffic studies and we use those traffic sites to project uh, trips for a variety of uses. However, given the uniqueness of this particular use, uh, there, there wasn't any public data available um, for a public. So in that case, we, we looked around um, to, to see what other uses in the area could sort of match up with that. And we performed a study at separate locations. So in this, in this case, we looked at North American Motor Club in Danbury, Connecticut. Uh, it's a very similar operation of the offered amenities such as cigar room, event space. Um, and they also have a, a large uh, vehicle storage compartment. Um, so the idea of studying that location was to kind of give us an idea of the traffic that would be generated at a similar facility. Um, we, we spent a few days out there and um, got developed trip generation rates um, for, for weekday and Saturday on peak periods. Um, the study at that facility found less than twenty trips during every peak hour entering or exiting. Um, which generally the threshold is about fifty left turns or a hundred trips. But it's really good that it can impact on the different uh, like way. Uh, we then took those trip generation rates and applied it to most facilities, slightly larger uh, development. That we're proposing here and developed uh, trip rates for the um, Jeffy Auto Program. But so uh, comparing those trip rates to um, the previously approved use, so this is an existing building that was previously approved for, for manufacturing. Uh, we found that um, given the, the day-to-day traffic is generally pretty low, um, there, there was actually less traffic projected uh, for the park than there would be for our manufacturing, just those part of the, this place. We also took a look at the events. Uh, it was mentioned that the attendance, we, we capped at about three hundred people per event. Um, they're member only events. Um, most events were much lower uh, attendance, um, generally families and family style events. Uh, so we spoke with uh, the Office of Traffic Administration to understand what their recommendation was for the trip rates for this type of event space. Cause also that space is not uh, listed in in the Institute of Transportation Engineers uh, data. So uh, their recommendation was about two point five persons per vehicle. Um, so for any given event, um, that's, that's how we could come up with the projection for the, the number of uh, vehicle trips. So we looked at um, screen here for a second. Looked at uh, a schedule, um, typical events in, in the month of July. Um, ranging um, from all different sizes. Um, and we applied that two point five persons per vehicle. Um, so for a max event, three hundred people, about a hundred and twenty uh, vehicles. For variables, uh, off peak, you know, this particular event on a Sunday. Uh, but on average, most events uh, less than thirty, thirty trips. Which is generally a low impact compared with the, the previous years. So you know, with, with all that said, uh, we concluded that uh, based on review of prior traffic studies, uh, or traffic counts. Um, that, you know, automotive facilities not expected to have any significant impact on the G S. Level service. Happy to answer any questions about.
I have a uh, question. Thank you for, for sharing out that uh, uh, trip generation table there. Uh, I'm, I'm not sure if this is a question to you or someone else on the applicant team. Um, is the, the schedule and expected attendance um, uh, represented in the July schedule? Is that typical of a, of what would be thought of as an average month or a peak month? Like, uh, is there a sense of like what this July schedule represents?
I, I think that's a better question for Andrew, but I believe it's just sort of an average month. I mean, uh, most events, to my understanding from discussions with Andrew, where, where they were under, you know, fifty people, it's, it's the family oriented uh, and it's centered around, say, F1 places or things like that. Um, and then that two point five people per car, I mean, that, that's a, I think that's appropriate, especially given um, family friendly atmosphere, you know, you figure a couple kids, you know, on average.
Uh, Commissioner Bryce, we can certainly have Mr. Pistor and provide you with a, a little more information. And he'll come on next, um, once you have asked your questions of Mr. Chakovsky. But good question, and you can describe how that was generated.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Chakovsky? Okay, so at this point, I would like to introduce you to Andrew, Andrew Pistor, who was the principal behind the Auto Collective. Um, he's available to answer any questions certainly, but I think he has some comments to make at the outset. And then uh, after Mr. Pistor uh, makes his comments, that will conclude our presentation in chief, and we would look forward to hearing from the public. Andrew, it's all yours.
Great, thank you, Liz. Uh, good evening Commissioners. Uh, my name is Andrew Pistor. I'm your business partner, Mark Vitaleani. Uh, together with our co-founders of the Auto Collective, uh, it's a proposed automotive club and collector vehicle storage facility at Ten Norton Place. As you know, the Auto Collective is designed to meet a need that Mark and I have both heard time and time again from collectors all through Fairfield County. Um, they're in need of a secure indoor space to store rare and valuable vehicles with a professional welcoming environment. And members can then also connect through their shared automotive interests. Our facility will hopefully offer indoor storage alongside a curated program like Liz mentioned, such as Formula One viewings, uh, simulator nights, uh, casual member gatherings and all organized with care and oversight. Uh, events will take place indoors primarily. In limited ca, limited cases, as Liz mentioned, uh, vehicles that are in storage uh, could be brought outside on a nice day uh, for, to stage or, or display that vehicle. Those moments, obviously, again, will involve cars already housed on site. Uh, this is a facility for members to protect and enjoy their collective vehicles, uh, not a space intended for external gathering or recreational vehicle use. Uh, we will not permit any behavior that conflicts with the purpose of the club. Just to address some other points as well. Sorry. All the, all the, all use of the event space will be either club sponsored or member sponsored. And the space is not intended to serve as a general community event venue and will not be made available for rental or used by individuals or organizations that are unrelated to the club. Every event held on site will align with the club's mission, membership structure and operational standards. Our members are individuals that are looking for a secure and respectful home for vehicles ranging from pre-World War One touring cars that are actually made in Connecticut back before the war, uh, to classic nineteen sixties Alfa Romeos, uh, to some modern collectible models as well. Uh, as Liz mentioned, they are prized vehicles, they're not daily drivers. And the activities around them reflects that low frequency, low intensity and high respect. We also see opportunities to support local engagement in a structured and thoughtful way. Uh, this is getting into that STEM program that Liz mentioned. We've been in contact with some local area schools, uh, North Public High School about sponsoring STEM-based learning tied to automotive design and competition. Uh, this is modeled after a program that I was involved with in Manhattan at the Classic Car Club. Uh, it's a great program. Uh, the kids, uh, we sponsor, we would sponsor a team from the area, which there's not many from Connecticut, which is why we want to make sure we have some. And the kids basically, we purchased 3D printers for the kids, we purchased wind tunnels, and then the kids actually designed Formula One team from the ground up. Uh, the car is about a one eighteenth scale. And every year they change how it's powered. So sometimes it's dry ice, sometimes it's um, uh, I believe they use a, a, a canister, sometimes compressed air. And the kids also not just build the car and learn about wind tunnels and learn about STEM, but they also have to market the team. So they have to present a marketing plan for how they plan to sponsor their team and who they're going to aim for. I had the pleasure of judging it many times and then it was just a great experience. And they moved to the finals in Austin, Texas for the nationals. And then the international finals are in Singapore. And uh, Cadillac is starting a Formula One team. And the recent winning team from Texas was actually able to hire two individuals hired out of that team from Texas that now work for Cadillac Formula One. So it's a great opportunity to get kids involved in racing and STEM. Again, uh, back to the club itself, because I get very excited about the STEM project. Operationally, this is a quiet, low-density use of a long vacant commercial property. Events are limited in size and frequency. They take place primarily on evenings and weekends and are conducted under staff supervision. Uh, if valet service is used, it will be brief, organized and professionally managed. We also intend, because of the value of the vehicles inside, we intend to have onsite security on, on premises at all non-operating hours throughout, throughout the day and after evening to ensure the safety of both the facility and the surrounding area. Security for us is, is number one. So there will be security on site. We've also heard concerns about lighting, and we want to be clear, we are not proposing, nor do we plan to install any changes to the existing outdoor lighting at the premises right now. Fixtures will remain as they are downward facing and only, and used only as needed. Uh, it's some personal about myself and Mark, uh, while this project is professional in nature, it's also rooted in our professional, our personal connection to the community. I live in Fairfield County with my husband and our one and a half-year-old son, who is already pointing out every car he sees by name. Uh, that's one of the main reasons why we want to, want to foster that, that next generation of car enthusiasts. So the club will have a, a family-focused children's area as well. Uh, we spent a lot of time in Norwalk, uh, we walked the beach. My son loves and goes to every week, the Maritime Aquarium and Stepping Stones, this is go-to location. Uh, we're also active members of the Cedar Point Yacht Club, and we value uh, what that, what that place has taught us, which means to be part of a community built on shared respect, purpose and volunteerism. That's the spirit we're aiming to bring to the neighborhood with the Auto Collective. And I welcome your questions.
I have a few. Um, and apologies if any of this has already been covered, sort of reading and listening at the same time. Will any events be open to the community or non-members?
They will not unless uh, the community requests it. Um, we will be open to doing, one of the examples uh, that some of our members that collect pre-war cars do. Um, they offer local um, uh, Boy Scout troops. I'm an Eagle Scout myself, so it was a big deal when he mentioned it to me. They offer uh, scout troops or community groups to come and do a scavenger hunt on the vehicle. So teaching them a little more about uh, what Connecticut pre-World War One actually did have five, I believe, manufacturers that were based in the state. Hartford had a great manufacturer, pre-World War One vehicles. So that, that would be something we'd be willing to work with the community on. Uh, an educational, i- it's not going to be a party open, open to the neighborhood to come. That's not what we're aiming for. It's going to be, hey, we want to deal, we want to do a local scavenger hunt, like I mentioned, with these World War One cars. You know, find where the castle is on this car. And the kids love that, and they've, if, it's happened before, but at private homes and where these collections are, we want to make it a little more accessible. So we're open to it, but it's, it's, it's something we want to do with the community, not, not in post.
Okay. Second question. Is membership open to anybody who can afford it and meet requirements? Or do you have to be sponsored by an existing member?
It's open to everybody and has to meet, there's no sponsorship. We're not looking to, as an example, um, we've had requests for people to store a nineteen, I think it's sixty-five Beetle. Uh, the car isn't worth a ton, but the fella can't store it, and it's his dad's car. So we don't want to say you have to only come to us if you have a car worth X or sponsored by somebody that's worth X. We have cars that are requested to be stored from, yeah, anywhere from a nineteen sixties Beetle to, you know, like a pretty new Corvette that just, they, they want to keep. Um, so no, we're not looking to do that kind of thing.
Thank you. And that's, that's interesting, I think. Based on sort of the, the news articles that I had seen, um, this was presented as a fairly luxury oriented club, which sort of led to my next question, which may be less applicable, but are there any sliding scale fees or ability for lower income folks to either join the club in full or a partial membership? I've seen some other clubs have um, full membership versus social, driver versus club.
Yes.
Younger adults, young families.
A hundred percent. So um, the family thing is very important to me. So um, the, there's, to be clear, membership is, includes the entire family. So it's not a thing where we want to say, okay, it's, you know, uh, it's, it's dad's place to get away from the family. That's not what mom's place. That's not what we're aiming for. We're aiming for a place that includes family membership. So the membership rates actually include the, the spouse and all children under the age of eighteen. Um, that's the goal. So it, I, I personally think it's, it's pretty affordable from a lower scale. It's, it's a, I think monthly membership now, we're kind of knocking around numbers, but it's less than, you know, I, I think a regular gym membership in the area. It's not, it's not, and that's include, again, includes the entire family. And that includes access to all the events. Um, F1 has seen a really big resurgence, so we're hoping to get a lot of kids into that. To address one quick question, I think it was you, uh, man, I mentioned about slot car racing, uh, inside or outside. Um, that's the kind of thing that we aim for with kids. We did it in Manhattan at the Classic Car Club. It was a great event. It's indoors and the kids have little um, podiums. And we set up a slot car race indoors for the kids to compete on. Then we give them trophies, they have like a podium ceremony. Um, and it, it's, it's indoor events for members' kids to have when it's nasty outside. Cause that's, I understand what that's like with my kid. So uh, those are the kind of indoor slot car events we're, we were aiming for.
Thank you. So it's sort of closer in scale to a gym membership than a country club membership? Not, but I know how much those are, but.
Yeah, I don't either. Um, but yeah. Closer to the gym membership, but there is a slide.
There is a sliding scale. Okay.
Yeah, if you want more services, we can offer that. If you have a car in storage, you want it to be hand washed and detailed, that's an option. But the lowest membership is on, on par to a gym membership, correct?
Thank you. I'm done.
I have a one question, which uh, is related to the, to the July schedule. Um, and so I, I'm curious, uh, is that schedule representative of an average month, a peak month? Like, do you have a sense of what that represents for over calendar year?
That is, not to, not to step on Ethan's toes, but that is a peak month. Um, because Formula One calendars and racing calendars, they don't often race in the winter because it's pretty cold. So the tires don't warm up. So summer is the peak month. So that July would be an example of a peak uh, event schedule. Um, kids also aren't in school, so there's more, we want to, want to focus more on events that children can attend to while they're not in school. Um, on weekends and weekdays and whatever we can do. Um, but yes, that is, that is a peak month. I, I would say that um, the only thing I would add to that is maybe uh, August would also be akin to a July, just because it is in the summer, but it would be an outlier. But I wanted to show that that is the outlier. That's, that's the most.
Thank you. No, I'm, I'm really glad that you guys did submit something that is uh, representative of the, the peak activity there. That way the, the public has an opportunity to see what, what the uh, the highest uses look like. Thank you.
Any further questions?
Any further questions?
We have nothing more at this point. We've just saved some time in the end for responses and summary, but that concludes our presentation to you.
Okay. Thank you very much. We will move on then to the, uh, public portion of the public hearing. In our public hearings, uh, people can speak as long as they want to, but they can only speak once. So be sure that you say everything that you intend to say in your one opportunity to speak. Um, we will bring people over. It is probably not a good idea to repeat what you've already sent in letters. We've read the letters. We understand what they say. And you're not really advancing your cause to repeat what is in a letter. It also isn't particularly helpful to repeat what another uh, person just said. That really doesn't much add to the outfit. So with that, uh, raise your hand and we will bring you over to participate. Uh, Brian, are you going to be responsible for that?
Sure. Um, so if you'd like to speak regarding this application, you could use the raise your hand tool. You click that once, it's located at the bottom of your screen. If you're dialing on a phone, you would hit star nine. And then while we wait for folks to do that, um, I'll just do some housekeeping things. So the application was referred to the town of Westport. It was referred to Westcog. It was referred to the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. Um, and it was referred to the Harbor Management Commission. Uh, we did not receive comments back from the Harbor Management Commission or from DEEP. Um, that's generally taken as, uh, finding of consistency with their review process. Uh, Westcog, uh, said that it was a local matter and that they were not going to provide comment and we did not, uh, receive comments from the town of Westport. Um, and then as Attorney Sachi mentioned, staff did suggest two modifications to their application, the text amendment component, um, as proposed. The first one was to, uh, rename the parking calculation instead of saying storage of motor vehicles was just to say car club instead. And, uh, the second one was to, uh, add in a amendment to the live music to include a car club, uh, so that live music could be accessory to a car club use. And with that, let's see who's raising their hands. Uh, we have Ms. Cece.
Uh, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can.
Uh, commissioners and applicants and staff. Um, my name is Diane Cece. I represent the East Norwalk Neighborhood Association. Um, our boundaries are essentially oh-six-eight-five-five for all intent and purposes. Um, and of course, this parcel sits within our, um, Neighborhood Association jurisdiction. The, um, uh, before I start the public comments, um, that are specific to the application, um, I just want to say, and, and this is going to be lengthy, so, um, I, I don't know if staff would want me to wait, but we only get one bite at the apple and there's a lot to address here. So, um, I apologize in advance. I, I also want to apologize because I didn't have an application and opportunity to submit this, um, in writing uh, for the deadline today. And so I am going to read, uh, the entire statement so that it is a part of the record verbatim. And, um, I prefer not to be a part of a legal public hearing and not be on screen, but unfortunately, um, I am not able to do that this evening. Um, so, uh, as a, as a preference before our comment, um, we want to be able to, for lack of a better term, um, re, pre-rebut what we think may be the rebuttal of Attorney Sachi um, regarding a key component of our applications that you didn't hear about tonight, which is community engagement regarding this application. Um, these Norwalk Neighborhood Association wanted the, the commission to know that we carefully considered an offer to meet directly with the property owner and the applicants following their submission. Um, however, we ultimately chose not to engage in the meeting for several reasons. And, uh, we wanted both, um, the applicants and staff and commission to be aware of this. Um, especially as we think it may help the process going forward. Uh, despite years of asking P and Z staff to encourage or actually require applicants of big controversial projects to meet with ENNA before filing. And despite directly, uh, asking Attorney Sachi to do so for us, um, she only reached out days after submitting this application. You know, that's when the statutory clock starts ticking and essentially the train has already left the station. The invitation that we did finally get was only for our board members, not the larger ENNA community, um, to be able to avail themselves of listening to the applicants, um, themselves. It was for a single date at dusk, outside in the parking lot at Norton. Uh, because who doesn't love squinting at documents in the dark before daylight savings time even kicked in? Um, they also said that we would have no indoor access to, uh, tour the facility to see what the, um, respective use was for the layout of the existing structure. Uh, we did offer to show up with just three board members and bring hard hats and all even, uh, but that didn't work out. Uh, we did propose an indoor meeting in East Norwalk or at City Hall and even invited them to our April meeting. Uh, the final offer was, however, to meet us in Westport to discuss an East Norwalk project with the East Norwalk Neighborhood Association about an East Norwalk parcel, but in Westport. Um, in any event, so instead of a check the box meeting that would actually reveal nothing new, we chose to meet directly with staff. And we do want to thank, um, uh, Brian Baker from P and Z, um, staff for your time and assistance, both in person and in our, uh, email, um, questions that we had. Uh, it's our, by sharing this in part because it's our hope that P and Z, uh, staff and the commission uh, will someday embrace what many other municipalities already do. They require applicants to meet with neighborhood groups before filing. We're officially done being the decorative checkbox on the compliance list. We want to be a part of working collaboratively with applicants, um, before they file so that we can have meaningful, um, you know, relevant input and be taken seriously when we're, you know, when we're making suggestions. With that, um, to the rebuttal that we did expect from Attorney Sachi, we now present our public comment. Um, this is actually broken into, oops, did I just stop off? Can you hear me still?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry. Something popped up on my screen that looked like I was gone. Um, this is broken into several segments. We're going to, um, begin with an opening, uh, comment. Um, we're going to talk about, um, our general position and some, uh, reviews that we've done of the documents that were provided on the city website. Um, I'm sorry to see, um, the Commissioner Rowena isn't here because one of his favorite ENNA um, public comments that takes into account the special conditions of the special permit. So, um, we actually are running through, um, all thirteen of those this evening. Um, we'll be addressing some concerns that we have with this draft, the draft resolution that staff prepared for you this evening and then a closing comment. Um, so first of all, good evening and thanks for the, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission for the opportunity to submit this comment regarding the application for a car club and event venue at Norton Park. We recognize the complexity of the proposal and importance of balancing economic development, industrial zone revitalization and the protection of nearby residential neighborhoods. We respectfully submit the following detailed comments organized by topic in the hope that they will be carefully considered by both the commission members and staff prior to any final decision. Uh, first, our general position. ENNA actually neither opposes nor supports the text amendment or the special permit application. We acknowledge that the proposed use is less intensive than historical Norton uses and less objectionable than other potential as-of-rate and special permit uses that exist still today in our zoning regulations. We recognize that a car club and event space, if properly managed, may pose fewer long-term nuisances than others such as warehousing, trucking terminals and manufacturing operations. However, we strongly believe that rigorous review, detailed analysis and meaningful conditions are essential to mitigate negative impacts due to the scale, complexity and novelty of the proposed car club and event venue. Furthermore, ENNA emphasizes that the long recommended, um, emphasizes to the commission that the long recommended Norton Park zoning study that was intended to be a standalone study to identify, um, highest and best uses for this unique parcel was never commissioned. And that after this particular application, we requested no other further special permit considerations for this parcel should proceed. Um, unless and until that study is completed. Finally, we hope that you'll conclude, you'll conclude as we have that this application is not so much a car storage facility with some club and event space inside, but rather it is a fifty thousand square foot event and club venue that happens to provide storage for many cars. By the way, to put it in perspective for you, the event and club spaces alone equate to nearly five times the size of the Rite Aid on East Avenue. In doing our due diligence and researching these clubs around the nation, it seemed to be a new phenomenon for these kind of country club car, um, facilities to start up. Um, most of them are very, their business models are very heavily focused on events and not the storage. And most of them are significantly smaller than this. Um, I couldn't find one, um, in the dozens and dozens that we've researched around the country that, um, equate to this size, especially with the, um, the combination of the two event spaces. And I'm going to talk about that a little bit later on. Uh, number two, and this may seem a little odd to you, but we want to speak to you and, and perhaps you and have you and staff consider this item again before voting on this application. It's our questions regarding motor vehicle property tax revenue. In considering the economic and community development impacts, ENNA initially assumed that this use would contribute very little to the city property grant list and certainly would not be a major job creator. However, one of the clarifications we believe is necessary prior to, to approval and by continuance of this hearing, if necessary, is to have the applicants and their attorney provide verifiable information regarding state statutes, DMV regulations and tax assessment protocol to clarify whether vehicles stored in Norwalk or registered elsewhere are subject to Norwalk motor vehicle property tax. In our research, we found legal references to CITUS rules. And I, I believe that's a legal term. I hope I'm saying, pronouncing it correctly. But in the CITUS rules for the state of Connecticut, quote, generally, vehicles in Connecticut are subject by law to property tax in the municipality where the vehicle in the normal course of operation most frequently leaves from and returns to or in which it remains. In other words, a vehicle is said to be taxed where it sleeps. The law presumes that this is the municipality where the owner resides, but there are exceptions, end quote. ENNA contends that this car club storage example is actually one of those examples. Tax assessment also applies to Norwalk for cars registered in other states but stored here for three or more months. Um, as you already know, another search resulted in this conclusion, quote, according to the Connecticut DMV, a vehicle is subject to property tax in the town where it is garaged, not necessarily where it is registered, end quote. If these vehicle owners are indeed required to pay property tax to Norwalk versus the town or state in which they reside or have the vehicle registered, ENNA would like to know by what means the city tax assessor can require storage records that contain dates and VIN numbers in order to prepare tax assessments for collection. Number three, assurance on restricting outdoor events. Uh, uh, and I'm going to have to do a little editing as we go along because of course, listening to their presentation, they may have provided some clarification that we did not have as of, um, even last night. Um, but at the April second preliminary review meeting, Attorney Sachi indicated in the recorded video that, that there would be no outdoor events. This was in response to, uh, Madam Chair's comment, quote, and of course, everything is inside. Specifically Attorney Sachi's response was yes. ENNA requested this assurance be formalized as a specific enforceable condition with the only possible exception of the one you heard tonight for a small car showing events for a limited number of invited guests. Number four, departmental sign-offs. We respectfully request staff to ask the following departments to provide the commission in public with additional responses either prior to approval or during their separate, their own specific permitting processes. The fire department. ENNA, um, made a phone call to, on Monday to Deputy Fire Marshall McDonald, um, who did the initial, um, inspection with the property owner. And, um, as of, uh, this evening, we have not had a response back yet. But his sign-off indicated that he discussed the department's concern with the property owner. But he did not elaborate on what those safety concerns were, except that system would be new and compliant. That was the conclusion. Um, ENNA would like to know how and when the fire marshal will determine maximum, maximum occupancy for the building, meaning all the uses that are identified to you. By what means the maximum occupancy subsequently is subsequently inspected and enforced and are inspections only initiated by neighbor complaints? Does the fire department assess volatile organic compounds, VOCs and car exhaust as fire hazards? Does the fire marshal determine or it did, or does the fire marshal determine where and how many indoor EV chargers can be placed? And we're assuming that some of these cars may be, um, EV. And what measures are in place for adequate emergency apparatus indoor access and fire suppression in the event of an EV car fire? Um, I won't elaborate on that. I think all the commissioners are familiar with the, um, the issues surrounding that. Um, as to the health department, we wanted to know, um, if the, if during your inspection debate, actually looked at the proposed food storage facilities and kitchen preparation areas. And does the health department also assess proper car exhaust ventilation systems, dumpster locations and measures for rodent control? Uh, Water Pollution Control Authority, we noticed that there wasn't any sign-off from them. We're not sure if one is requested or required, um, but we thought that they should be providing, uh, the commission with anticipated impact on wastewater processing based on the estimated number of large-scale functions per month, albeit, um, seasonal. Um, as, uh, as, uh, the owner just identified to you. Under transportation, mobility and parking, specifically how is parking allotted to this use relative to the relative parking for the proposed MTA facility and future uses within the current empty building? What are the discrepancies that the P and Z staff refers to in their May second memo to you where they discovered during the review of the application in regards to the previously approved MTA and Corville parking requirements and locations? Um, I'm bringing it up as a matter of fact, because you know that there's, um, litigation underway regarding this commission's approval of the MTA application. And a part of that appeal is based on a question of the calculation that you did on parking. And on TMP, finally, did TMP and traffic consultants take into account that both the car club and the event operations will require multiple deliveries per week? Were the, were these trips factored into traffic and impact analysis? And if so, what was the conclusion? Um, you know, including linens, food, liquor, um, other supplies, car supplies, um, and building maintenance supplies. The First District Water, uh, Department, we had no comment or question at this time, except that we're not sure what applicant meant by dry wash or hand wash for arriving vehicles. And, um, whether or not First District Water Department would require any indoor car washing activity to use recirculated water. And then, um, finally, on the sign-offs for, um, landscaping, um, hardscaping in the site plan, the, um, I, I forget the gentleman's name, forgive me, but in talking about when, when they reviewed the site plan, we were looking to find out what is the current, um, these, these are normally provided to you, the actual numbers. What is the current square footage of impervious surface today for the structure and all surfaces? And what is the increase in impervious under this proposal? Specifically where the landscape area is being replaced with impervious, what they refer to as the ramp. And also has staff for the commission requested reductions in impervious surfaces, which I believe is, um, a requirement in our P O C D. Pardon me. Little bit of water there. Okay, so now on to the special permit standards for this application. A, under density and use of building, ENNA has no comment at this time. Is there no changes to the existing structure, but we have concerns with the density of use for the events? B, under stable traffic flow. Although the proposed use is less intensive than historical uses, the commission should please take into account that the abutting neighbors have not experienced large scale activity there in more than a decade. And significant activity there literally in decades. With the possible MTA depot and now this application, the neighborhood will see vehicle truck, truck and delivery trips increase significantly. ENNA is requesting that a peak usage post occupancy review be done regarding traffic, traffic safety and congestion impacts. Especially a review again of level of service. Additionally, the parking calculations do not appear to take into account a reasonable number of cars for event staffing, with the average three hundred person event requiring anywhere from thirty to fifty staff members, including kitchen, bussers, waitstaff, bartenders, et cetera. ENNA had not seen any areas of the parking designated as employee or staff only and would like the applicant or staff to clarify what panther in place for overflow parking. We also want to ensure that if valid parking is offered as an amenity, that the operations will enforce the state statute for no idling, the the no idling statute mandated by the state. I want to point out here something I just saw tonight as well, when the engineer was going through the site clearing and he was showing you the diff, all the different options now for parking that make up the total that they're required to have. You'll notice that one of the larger parking lots is what we all call the front lot. It's the one that faces Norton Place proper, not the one that comes around to Halsted. Now, I haven't walked it myself, but I have to say that that I'm not seeing any entrance on that side. And that seems like a pretty good walk for, you know, someone coming to events in the evening. You know, especially if they're formal events, you know, seven to eleven at night and you know, could be member weddings and things like that, and people trying to walk from that parking lot. Then all the way around the building, I'm not sure what the safe access is to then get to that, what they're calling the event space door. So I hope that you'll get further clarification on that. Available, C, availability, mass transit, and provision of sidewalks. Again, no comment at this time, except to note that we ourselves have frequently observed walkers, bikers, joggers, and skateboarders utilizing the access road to and from Halsted Apartments. We're concerned with additional delivery trucks and during large events, the possibility of excess cars circling in, in that access road in search of parking spots. B, availability and compatibility of utilities. I'm not sure if we saw anything mentioned anywhere. We're curious as to whether they, the owners and or the business partners have any intention of putting solar panels on that building as part of their operation. And, and we weren't clear if the building is powered by TTD or EverSource and and whether or not this is part of the revenue generation. E, adverse effect impacts of noise, odor, fumes, dust, and artificial lightning, lighting. Although the applicant contends that there, contends that there'll be no impacts, ENNA is seeking meaningful enforceable conditions to restrict outdoor events and control noise from amplified music, even within any portion of the structure. For the auto collective owners to encourage members and their best to be respectfully quiet when exiting eleven PM events. We also request that noise, fumes, and dust be kept to a reasonable minimum during tenant fit-up. The building is still boarded as best we can tell, and we haven't seen any activity there. Residents are concerned about fumes from car exhaust systems in the building and where the outdoor vents will be located. Neighbors in close proximity, including myself, can attest to the prevailing, that the prevailing winds there are north to south, carrying noise and odor across the main road and the tracks to residential homes, ones that you saw on the map earlier tonight. There has been no food preparation or services on site for at least a decade as well. And we request that odors and food waste should be mitigated by whatever means necessary. We also request conditions to limit trash dumpster locations, so as not to impact neighbors and to limit contracted trash and recycling vendors to operate within hours allowed by city ordinance. As to lighting, with up to four hundred cars, many likely to be classic rare or luxury vehicles, ENNA shares the concerns of building security and the amount of artificial lighting required, lighting required for security and also for guest safety. I believe they may have addressed this, but we're assuming that all outdoor lighting will be, will comply with the zoning regulations and not adversely impact neighbors' businesses or I ninety-five traffic. It would be preferable, but I don't believe staff requires this, for their lighting standard to be dark sky compliant to reduce light pollution, glare, and negative impact on wildlife, including migrating and or nesting birds. Additionally, and very important, the newly introduced food presence there may attract rodents. Conditions should be added to require licensed guest control mitigation and elimination services. We can speak to that in great detail in East Norwalk due to all the infrastructure work we have, but it would be a concern at this parcel as well. F, signs of size and design in harmony with the neighborhood. We request a condition that all signage comply with your existing regulations and that no illuminated signing, signage be allowed except at the guest and car entrance on the north side facing I ninety-five. G, adequacy of yards and open space screening and buffering. The proposed increase in impervious service is unacceptable and inconsistent with your planning goals. The proposed draining solution should be supplemented with additional pervious surface and tree plantings and what, what are called parking islands. ENNA requests all rooftop mechanicals be set back to the northernmost roof side and buffered with sound attenuating screening. Generator testing should be required to be weekdays only and after eight AM in the morning. H, impact on neighborhood properties. ENNA agrees that this use is less intensive than some potential industrial uses, but notes that without an inspection plan and enforceable conditions, it could pose significant impact regarding noise and traffic, especially during the height of the Formula One season and during large weekend evening events. Enforcement should be swift and not only as a result of resident complaints, but the city should conduct random unannounced inspections to ensure compliance. Complaints of excessive noise after hours should be responded to swiftly by our police staff who are equipped, who should be equipped with and trained in decimal testing. Existing land use in the area, letter I. Although this is located in an industrial park, site is surrounded on all sides by residential properties. Many banquet facilities do coexist peacefully within residential areas by being good neighbors in exchange for their larger structure and parking areas. ENNA is concerned that neither staff nor attorney Sutti have identified specifically the other SDLI zone parcels where the use might now be allowed by special permit. Again, I want to remind you that in our research of this business model across the country, none of them come anywhere close to the scale of this. Most of them are significantly less. I believe the Danbury one that they referred you to as well. By the way, I'm not even sure if that's an operation. We, there was no active website for them recently. We generally do oppose language that is tampered with to stop hot zoning. But we are concerned that similar applicants could follow within East Norwalk. As Attorney Sutti pointed out to you, there are parcels that could qualify. Once this club use text amendment is approved, it can't be undone for compliant parcels, even if they do have to apply by special permit. J, the proximity of community facilities. ENNA has no comment, except that since the car club intends to be a one-stop shop for food, entertainment, and merchandise, we don't expect our local businesses to benefit, except perhaps our East Avenue gas stations. We do expect club members may use local parks and beaches, and we hope that they would participate in Norwalk's community car events outside of Norton Place, for example, at the beach or fundraisers at Riverbend. K, compliance with the zoning code and P O C day. While nearly every application can point to some P O C goal that it fulfills, we believe the stated compliance presented by the applicant is a stretch. Our concern is that this is not primarily a car storage facility with some events, but rather a full-service event venue with a car enthusiast theme. We expect, we therefore expect the commission could enact conditions limiting event size and number and prohibiting public rentals of event space or community events, even when sponsored by a club member. A specific question I have now, after having heard the applicants speaking about members only and that applications for membership are open and on sliding scale. I want to just address what is a potential loophole. For example, could I, as a non-car enthusiast or luxury car owner, apply to be a member there, even if I'm not intending to store a car there? And by virtue of my membership of the use of the facility in the car club, would I then be able to sponsor private events and community events as a member? I think that's an important question to answer tonight and a loophole that we don't want to face when it happens. L, the conservation of wetlands, watercourses, and ecologically valuable land. During the MTA application process, an osprey nest was observed on top of the southeast tower of the building, directly above the planned MTA shops. The nest was confirmed by the Osprey Nation Project Coordinator of the Connecticut Audubon Society and then was designated as Norwalk number sixty-three Norton Place Nest after a registered nest steward volunteered to add this to her list. Ian and I cannot independently confirm the outcome, but it was subsequently reported to us that the nest was destroyed during the property owner's tree trimming and lighting upgrade in anticipation of this project in October of last year. And described to them who reported it to us as, quote, having been scraped away, that the nest was having been scraped away. Measures should be taken to observe any future nesting and to report it accordingly and act accordingly. We have no other comment on the standard, except that the increased parking and delivery trip should be evaluated for runoff control due to the wetland proximity, regardless of whether or not there are regulated activities anticipated directly in the hundred-foot zone. Storm drain filters are only as good as their routine maintenance. And finally, M, no zoning violations exist on the property. And we hope that staff will address this as well in, as in addition to Attorney Sutti. As of this writing, fines continue to accrue due to blight violations related to boarded windows and other violations that we think are also connected to what the zoning regulations are. ENNA, ENNA seeks clarification as to whether permits can actually be issued while the owner or tenant is in violation of any city ordinance, including building and code enforcement. Okay, the next section briefly is our concern with what we, what was issued as a draft resolution, resolution concerns. First of all, ENNA does thank P and Z staff for creating and posting their memo and draft resolution prior to the hearing. Most recently, we don't actually see or have the benefit of seeing that for the night of the hearing. And we found it helpful and we thank you for doing that. We hope you continue that process. We respectfully request that the commission carefully review and consider the language in the draft resolution to ensure, one, that all the conditions are specific, measurable, observable, and enforceable. Two, that no vague or subjective language is used that could leave the compliance open to interpretation or dispute. Specifically regarding condition number two on capacity of the designated event space, we want to have a specific maximum capacity designated also for the twenty-seven thousand square foot car club space as well, because this can also hold three hundred or more people. We are still seeking clarification on whether concurrent events can be held in both spaces as this could then totals over six hundred guests with hundreds of cars. As of this writing, the applicant has chosen not to respond until this evening. Three, that there are clear timelines for compliance inspection and review of conditions post-approval. Four, that there are explicit penalties or remedies outlined in the event of non-compliance and violations. Five, that any reference you made to administrative approvals or administrative sign-offs are fully transparent with the opportunity for public review if the modifications materially affect the use or intensity of the project. And for an opportunity for us to request the commission to deem it either minor or major. And we believe if it is deemed major, then it does come back for a possible public hearing. And finally, six, ENNA respectfully, respectfully request that staff remove condition four in regards to outdoor events and replace it with, quote, no member-sponsored or public outdoor events are allowed except for occasional showing of cars for the enjoyment of limited number of invited guests. And that, quote, no food, beverages, or entertainment be provided outdoors during such car showings. Which also raised the point too, that we saw an anticipated event in July is a, a Fourth of July barbecue. So we're not sure if they're planning an indoor barbecue. I'm not quite sure how that works, but we'd want clarification on that specific event. In closing, and as always, I am happy to stay on for myself on behalf of ENNA to clarify anything or answer your questions. In closing, to recap, ENNA does not oppose this application in principle. On the contrary, we believe that with thoughtful enforceable conditions, the new use could be a positive addition to the area. I'll add that tonight, we were pleased to hear that the applicants are looking to collaborate with groups like Norwalk High School and clubs like the, like the Scouts in terms of fostering STEM, STEM opportunities for them. But absent any clear, but absent the clear safeguard, it risks becoming a source of abortable nuisance and conflict between the industrial and residential neighbors. ENNA remains committed to working collaboratively with the commission, applicants, and other stakeholders to ensure that all developments within East Norwalk balance the needs of business with the protection of our community's character and the well-being and right to quiet enjoyment by our residents. We respectfully request that the commission take our concerns into consideration when making its final decision and when deliberating, making your final decision, and that you impose enforceable conditions that will mitigate any potential negative impact. We look forward to any applicant rebuttal this evening and trust that it will serve to clarify and inform and be constructive and respectful. And with that, we thank you for your time and attention for our legitimate concerns and our requests. That concludes our comments. Thank you.
Sorry, Diana, cut you off. If anyone else would like to speak, you can use the raise your hand tool. It's at the bottom of your screen. You click that once. If you're done on a phone, you hit star nine.
Hi, hi, my name's Christina Olson. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name's Christina Olson. I live at three Heron Court in Norwalk. I'm going off to the commissioner's question, asking about the closest homes to the new event space. That's probably the houses that are on Howard Avenue as well as me who lives on Howard Court. So when you take a look at the overall map, we are the homes that are right to the south, right next to the train station. Right next to the train tracks, excuse me. So it's the, the property, the train, which only, you know, once, once or twice an hour, and then a whole bunch of homes. So I feel, you know, we are within a hundred feet. And I, I just have a few concerns regarding And I just have a few concerns regarding this applicant. I don't want to go over, Diane Cece went over a lot of things, so I'm trying to cut my notes short, if you will. You know, I'm all for a storage of cars. I think that sounds like a great use of the space. I am just concerned about this added event space. I, as mentioned, that all the events should be on the inside, but I too picked up on that outside barbecue. Also, they mentioned a valet station. To me, a valet station's outside event. I really don't want to hear the idling cars or the revving of engines. I can hear the revving of engines because several years ago, there were people doing donuts and drag racing in that parking lot. And I could hear all of it. So yes, if it could be limit to inside events, no outside idling. And sorry, I'm cutting out a lot of my notes here because Diane covered so much. The. Going back to the membership, it sounds like anyone can become a member. You don't need to store a car to become a member. And that just kind of goes back to the numbers of how big, how many members will the club be having overall? Yes, they only have four hundred and eighty or so parking spaces, but it sounds like they could have many more members because you. A car is not a requirement to have a membership. Also, the square foot that they're asking for to have events. Yes, they're saying that their events are going to be limited to three hundred people or three fifty each, but. You know, two twenty thousand square foot event spaces can hold, you know, a thousand people each. So who's really putting in the limits? Of the numbers that they're giving you. So I'm asking that the numbers of tenants or occupants be limited. I'm asking for no outside events. And I am worried about overall garbage. Pollution, car exhaust from the event space. Also understand that the Norton property is on the high ground and I'm on the low ground. My neighborhood has paid to put up a fence that longs around the rails. That's on our property that we paid for. But we can see straight into Norton because Norton is on the higher ground. So if they are going to be having all these events and ongoings, and I hope that. They'll be required to put up some sort of screening. And again, when they talk about the number of events that they are having, when I Googled Formula One. It's mentioned there are about twenty-five events, race events every year, race event being kind of a weekend thing. So that's twenty-five events, twenty-five weekends out of fifty-two weekends a year. So that is a large number of events just for their Formula One watchings. Nonetheless, their parties and I don't know how many members that they're going to be having because. Sounds like you don't need to host a car there to have a membership. Okay, I think that was it. I'm just worried about the noise, the garbage, the people, the outside barbecues. The revving of engines. And I hope that the city of Norwalk enforce and stipulate. Making this, you know, a neighborhood event, a neighborhood storage facility. And not a massive event space with lots of noise in a neighborhood, in a residential neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Henry. Just a reminder to say your full name and address for us.
Will do. My name is Henry Chapman. I live at two Heron Court. In fact, I'm one of Christina's neighbors. I live right across a little cul-de-sac from her. This is a very controversial site, as you all know. My personal opinion though is that this is probably the best project that has been put forth for this site. I'm actually in favor of it myself. However, I'm very grateful that Diane was here. She covered a great many of my concerns about it and Christina as well. And I really think that. That there's a little more work to be done to ensure that. The owners of the site are going to be true to the things that they are proposing. I've, I'm also a, an investor of my own. And I know the kinds of things that I might tell planning and zoning commission in order to get my project started. So I just want everyone to be conscious and aware that these are real issues. That I don't think were covered in the depth that they could or should have been. I'm really thankful to you all for creating this audience. Very happy to be a part of it. And I don't have any other comments to make, but I just wanted to say thank you to you all. And to encourage you to put forth an earnest effort in nailing down these. These issues that are not white. Elaborated on as well as they could be. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
And if anyone else would like to talk, use the raise your hand tool or hit star nine. Yeah, Marcy Demby.
Hi, my name is Marcy Demby and I live directly across from the entrance to ten Norton at eleven Norton Place. And I find it difficult to get out of the parking lot. Of Nord eleven Norton Place because people are, are going way too fast. Coming around that corner from Strawberry Hill. And I see. This project as a traffic issue unless they're going to take into account. Possibly putting in a light. At that, at the intersection between eleven Norton Place and ten Norton Place. Because it sounds like a lot of the traffic is going to be coming through from that entrance to the location. And ever since they built the condo behind ten Norton Place. We've had trouble getting out of our parking lot because people are coming out from the condos behind. Ten Norton Place. So I just hope that you take into account that. Regardless of what they're saying. It is going to have a huge impact on the transportation on that road. And I, for one, am a little concerned. But other than that, I think Diane covered every aspect that the neighborhood is concerned about. So thank you for your time.
All right, we'll do one last call. Anyone who would like to speak, use the raise your hand tool or hit star nine. Seeing none, Ms. Wells.
Okay, thank you very much. That ends the public testimony and we'll go on to attorney Sachi for her rebuttal.
Thank you, Chairman and Madam Chairwoman. First thing is I think there were also letters of support that were submitted. There were several letters in opposition, but those individuals also testified tonight and that was Ms. Cece and Ms. Olson. But there were at least two, if not four, letters of support and I just want to make sure that they are part of the permanent record.
Yes, we saw them.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to call upon Eric Lindquist. There were some specific technical questions related to drainage, stormwater. And things of that nature. So if Eric could come on and answer those questions, then we'll do the same for Mr. Shakovsky on traffic. And also some questions that perhaps Grant Wright can answer. For example, a question about solar panels on the roof and the location of rooftop mechanical equipment. So Eric, could you take it from here? And then after those three individuals have answered the technical questions that were raised. I'm sure Mr. Pister would like to speak and then I will reserve some time for rebuttal at the end. Thank you.
Sure, I'm trying to track down the engineering report right now. One of the questions, as was noted, was related to the. Increase in impervious area. As I noted during my presentation, the only increase is in this area. It's fairly minor. I'm trying to get the exact number. I don't have it handy at the moment. I'm just tracking down the engineer report so I can get it to you in a few minutes, but it's, it's fairly minor. It's a thousand or fifteen hundred square feet, I think. Something along that nature. You can, you can see that area here, here and here.
Do you need to be sharing your screen?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I was.
I wanted to call that when you were saying here. Thank you.
No worries. I thank you for calling me out on that. So backing up a little bit, once again, this is the only area where there is an increase in impervious coverage. It's these three small areas here. In relation to the grand scheme of this project and this property, it's almost negligible. Even if we didn't put in retention, the peak flows from the site barely went up from the development, just based on the overall time and concentration for the project. But it does go up ever so slightly. So that is why, for several reasons, we added the stormwater system. But I can just run through it very briefly right now when we go to the revised plan. So this, this system here was put in for three reasons. For a few reasons, the first reason is water quality. Whenever you're providing a project, you want to first, number one, put it through pretreatment, which we show here with the water quality structure. And then you want to find a way of mitigating the peak flows as well as providing additional tertiary. In this case, primary sedimentation or pollution renovation on it. So this will take out fines and other pollutants in the stormwater and help purify and clean the water. So that's the main, that's one of the main reasons for it. The other is to attenuate peak flows, which I said, you know, it's a very ever so slight increase in runoff from this. Change in impervious coverage. But that increase is mitigated by retaining the system here and throttling the flow out so that it doesn't ever exceed. The peak flows going down over by the railroad track. And the third reason for it is because the infiltration infiltrates the water into the groundwater, the runoff into the groundwater. So those three components are why we have the system here and what it does. So this minor increase in impervious area is not impacted. We had this discussion with the DPW. Our first, our initial application was not meeting peak volume. Because we provided a liner over this system. The liner was there because there have been environmental, there are environmental concerns on the site. And this area was kind of outside of those concerns, but we still put the liner in there for precautionary measures. Because that's typically what the detailing of our retention systems have been on site in the past and all the historical applications we've done, whether it for the data center. For the M T A and for this site. So we, we kept maintaining that use of liner. But in talking with the environmental personnel who are responsible for the site, this is outside of the area of concern and they were okay with us infiltrating. So we were able to remove the liner, which allowed the water to infiltrate to the soil, thereby reducing volumes from the site. That, that pretty much addresses the, the stormwater question. I will, as someone else is speaking, come up with that number and I can provide it later on. But if you'll just give me a few minutes to track that down. It is in the engineering report. I'm pretty positive I mentioned it, but if not, we can definitely get that for you. But like I said, it is fairly minor.
I can answer a couple of the traffic questions that were raised. Just in terms, you know. In terms of the intensity of the site and the size, I think it was brought up a few, a few times. That study site that we looked at was smaller in size, but we did note. That they utilize in their storage like a three-car stacker system or they could fit more cars vertically. Whereas proposed here is, I believe, a two-car stacker system that just takes more space to store those vehicles. In either case, when we developed our trip generation rates for the site based on the study site, we. We calculated the trips per square footage and accounted for that, you know, projections. And even with that taken into account, during normal peak hour traffic, during normal time periods, it's. Less than fifty trips to the facility over the course of an hour. And I would again point out, that's a conservative assumption. We also took new traffic volume counts at the nearby intersections and compared that to the traffic studies that were done for the M T A site. And concluded that there wouldn't be any significant impact to the level of service at the adjacent intersections. I'd also just like to point out the traffic light at the intersection in Norton Place. Based on my review of the traffic volumes, we wouldn't hit the traffic volume warrants. To warrant the installation of a traffic light there. Based on our, our trips or maybe their college or something. In terms of the, the events, you know, they. Most events of any significant size, again, on average, we projected less than thirty trips. Per event to the facility over the course of an hour. But even those larger events, they're scheduled typically off peak hours, you know, not, not during fresh hour. When you would have a greater impact to the adjacent roadway. Happy to answer any other questions that may have arose. I think I covered it for me.
I think there is one more question related to traffic that I noted, which was about. Impacts from delivery vehicles. Was that something I was considered in the study?
We didn't find a significant number of delivery vehicles for our study location. I think Andrew might be able to answer that in terms of his particular operation. I believe that cars, you know, all the hidden answers to that, how far is it delivered? But I know in terms of like typical deliveries, you know, it would be small box trucks. And garbage trucks and nothing kind of doing there. But I'll let him answer the question.
Before, before you go, Mr. Shakovsky, are delivery vehicles typically included in a traffic report as? As you evaluate traffic generated by the use, is that a standard practice to include delivery vehicles?
Delivery vehicles typically occur on during off-peak hours. So, you know, we look at the peak hours of traffic and that's, that's our focus and when there's the greatest impact for the adjacent roadways. And those are typically, deliveries are typically off, you know, midday, mid-afternoon would be any impact to the roadway. What we would look at is. The circulation of those vehicles and making sure that they can access the site, not impacting curbs, sidewalks or anything like that. This site was obviously an industrial site. It's more than enough space to accommodate the turn and radio. Does that answer your question?
Thank you, yes.
I did, I did find in the report, just to touch back on the drainage, on page two five under section two point three of the report. It is noted that it's an increase in impervious area and an increase of three thousand five hundred sixty cubic square feet.
Thank you, Eric. Mr. Wright, did you have any commentary on any of the questions that were raised?
For the rooftop H VAC? I have some minimal information. I know there was discussions with one of our mechanical engineers. Based on the capacity of what was there and what's going to be provided. I believe there's new services being provided to the roof. I'm not familiar unless Andrew, you have information about solar panels. I'm not a hundred percent sure about that. But it looks like I'm just reading through. From the engineer's original reports. And there is some information here regarding upgrades of rooftop equipment. But I would have to dig through that a bit more.
Well, I can represent that if there's, if there's new mechanical, we would have to abide by whatever the mechanical equipment setback is off the roof edge plus screening. And as far as solar panels, the current regulations address new construction with solar panels. We're not proposing solar panels on the roof. It's not new construction. It's all interior fit up. Mr. Pistor, do you have some comments or some clarifications that you could share with respect to some of the comments that Ms. Cece raised and others?
Yeah, sure. So I was taking notes very diligently while everyone was speaking. And the four points that I just wanted to bring up really quickly that I.
And the four points that I just wanted to bring up really quickly that I know. One was for EV chargers or EV vehicles inside. We will not be and are not, we're not allowing members to store any EV vehicles inside. We are a classic car and collector car kind of people, so EVs are are not our bag. So we're definitely going to, we're not allowing EV storage. We're not, and no EVs will be stored inside this facility at all. Regarding, just one note regarding local business impact, I just want to clarify that since we are not, will be not, and are not permitted to do any maintenance or either mechanical or bodywork or tune ups or anything like that on the site. I would point out that the local businesses or that are in the auto industry, any shops in the Norwalk area will see their, you know, client base increase substantially because those cars will probably ninety percent of them be maintained not far from where they're stored. So I would argue that that we are going to increase the the local economy substantially for the auto industry specifically. On club and event space simultaneously, I just want to give a little more detail on what club space means. So our goal with the event space was to make sure that when we do have a let's say that a kid's slot car event, which are tracks that are put together indoors that the kids would use. If that takes place in the event space, that doesn't mean, and we will not permit, an event to take place in the club space. Club space is for members to come and let's say like myself or my husband or anybody else, if they want to work remotely, they're able to do that in the club space. If they want to sit down, have coffee and work remotely, they're able to. That club space will never be rented or used or booked or at all. It's available to members to just to use, to to use a simulator, to just relax, to to work from remotely, to, you know, just have a conversation with some friends. That is not a rentable, bookable, any kind of space, the club space. The event space is solely there to be able to allow the club to function. If there is a STEM racing event going on in the event space, members can still access the facility and use its benefits. And I also wanted to mention that membership cap, membership is capped at four hundred people, so it is on par with the amount of cars in storage. We don't want to make it so much so that we're allowing so many people to join that you can't utilize the facility and the benefits of being a member. That is very important to us. But again, to clarify, you don't have to have a car to be a member because we don't want to limit it. I'm noticing from friends and family and people in the area that and especially other parents, they're desperate to find a community that's not a country club or where they don't feel comfortable at. So we don't want to say unless you have a car, you're not allowed to join. We do want to allow that community to to grow organically at the car, at the auto collective. But that being said, we are capping the membership at at four hundred members because, again, we don't want to be overwhelming the facility or what it means to be a member of the community, our community of the car club. Thank you.
Do any of the commissioners at this point, with the additional information we just provided, do you have any questions for either Mr. Pistor, Mr. Shakovsky, Mr. Lindquist or Mr. Wright at this point?
Okay, then I've got One small question. There isn't any kitchen in this facility, is there?
As it currently sits, the facility, our portion, I can't speak to the rest of the facility. I don't know how large the rest of the building is. I haven't been in it, but the our section that we are occupied, yes. We will be installing a I don't really know the right way to say it, but a like a Starbucks style heater for if anybody wants to get like a charcuterie board or a pizza reheated or something like of that nature, but it will not be a full, you know, industrial style kitchen. It's not something we're going to be doing.
So to be unlikely, you'd be having dinners for three hundred people in the event space.
Correct. Well, I mean, I guess caterers could bring in something like as an example, I had my son's baptism at Cedar Point. They don't have a kitchen that I was able to use. The caterer just brought hot food in, heated it up and handed it out. That's kind of what we're aiming for. If somebody does want to do that in the event space, it's a catering style made off site by the caterer and then heat it up and hand it out, but not cooked on site.
Thank you.
One thing which I attorney said, I'm not sure if you're about to jump into or not, but one of the things I heard come up a couple of times, both in spoken and written public comment was about the size of the event space. On the plans I saw, it was denoted as a twenty thousand eight hundred square foot size for the event space. Is that right? That it's that size? I had heard some folks commenting that it was fifty thousand square feet, so.
I think
clarification on that.
I think what they did is they combined the club space and the event space, but as you just heard from Mr. Pistor, they would not be having events at the same time. So yes, the identification of the event space is what exists on the plan. And keep in mind with the event space, part of the allure of the event space is to have some of the vehicles from time to time during events in that space. So it's some of it's occupied by vehicles that, let's just say that someone wants to have, I don't know, Andrew, you'll have to forgive me if I go astray, but if someone who is a member would like to have a gathering for a fiftieth birthday party, they could use the event space, but I would suspect they'd like to have some of those luxurious, vintage, classic vehicles in the space as part of the experience.
Yeah, it's correct. I've found at these events that there's a bunch of it was actually one event I had been to at one of one of these facilities where there was a fellow who's retiring and he had his grandfather's Porsche that, you know, it'd been one driver car basically. And he wanted to put that in the space for a retirement party and he had a bunch of friends that had some old antique Porsches as well to put out. So that event space is not by any means. That's the goal of the of the limitation on the amount of people. It's not wall to wall people. It's taken up with vehicles. It's taken up with maybe a racing sim, maybe you know, a display area for some kids to do some modeling of car one eighteen scale models. So this table's in the corner. It's a multi-use space, but is not wall to wall people, hence the three hundred limit.
I am, I'm not sure if this is a technical question about how how our conditions of approval are written or work, but I personally would be very interested in seeing a large event space possibly at this site. I think Norwalk needs it. If if you guys had been intending to possibly use both sides of the club as an event space, I wouldn't necessarily be opposed to it. At the same time, hearing, hearing the concerns and understanding the concerns, I'm really glad that your plan is, I think, quite relatively small scale to to the space as it is. And I like your minimal plan. I'm wondering if in the conditions of approval we could have something. I think some of the comments were sort of leaning towards like make it very clear that like it's never to be more than four hundred people that are members or only the one space will be used for events, things like that. I'm wondering if we could have something in there saying like, this is the current plan. If they want to ever change that, it would come back to the commission for review of how the current plan has been going and feedback from the public and things like that. So it's not to sort of cut off or forestall any other possibilities, but to make sure that any other possibilities are done thoughtfully and with community feedback.
Commissioner Chabak, any conditions of approval that you deem appropriate, you have the power to affix to an approval should you decide decide to approve a project? And since it's a special permit application, any changes to the approved plan and those conditions of approval would be required to first be reviewed by staff, but then in all likelihood, it would come back to you for determination if those changes are major or minor. And as Miss Cici did point out, some changes are deemed minor by this commission on a special permit modification. Some are deemed not minor, but not major. So you may have to go back to hearing. Some are deemed more significant that a new application would be required. So you still do maintain that control over what happens in the future without forestalling the auto, the auto collection to come back to you should circumstances change and they want to adjust what you've approved, if you in fact approve. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
Sure. Are there any other questions that our team needs to answer before I wrap up and respond to some of the comments? Okay. Thank you for your time tonight. I'll try to be brief. First, in response to some of Miss Cici's comments, I do want to let you know what transpired to try to meet with the members of the Eastern North Neighborhood Association. Within about a week after we filed, and we are not going to meet with neighborhood associations prior to a filing, we don't know what the specific program is yet. We don't know what the component parts are yet. But within about a week after the submission, I did contact her. Her, I offered to meet on March eighteenth, but that was not convenient for everyone. We then offered either March tenth or March twelfth. That didn't work. We settled on March thirty first and thought that would be a good day. The reason that the meeting was to take place in Westport was that it was a place that we could accommodate approximately twenty people. We tried to have a meeting in City Hall and I was informed by Tom Livingston that that we could not rent space in City Hall. So it wasn't some nefarious plot to hold something outside of town. It was just the date that was selected and that was the location, the Westport Public Library that could accommodate enough people that the Eastern North Neighborhood Association could bring more than just five or six. We too were interested in the study for Norton that was hoped to be presented and undertaken and presented. But it hasn't. So whether that it should or it shouldn't have, that really has no bearing on your discussion tonight. And I think we've described how the event venue will work and how the club venue will work. And if you deem it appropriate to impose conditions of approval as to simultaneous events cannot take place, there's a cap on the maximum attendance and the event space. Those are reasonable conditions and Mr. Pistor has already indicated what the cap on membership would be. I think the motor vehicle tax question is a very good question, but that's not a zoning question. My understanding is motor vehicle taxes typically are paid to the municipality where the vehicle is registered, but there may be some other requirements. And that would be up to the owner of the vehicle to make sure he or she appropriately remits payment on motor vehicle taxes. I don't think that the, I think that the commentary about outside events is gaining more concern than it needs to be. I think a picnic on a July fourth day with some vehicles outside with members is a reasonable club event. Should it be every Friday, Saturday night throughout the day? No, but that's not what's being proposed. So I think you can certainly impose conditions of approval with respect to that. Municipal approvals, the fire department received every copy of the plan and report document that was necessary and submitted to this commission, to the department for review, and they issued an approval. That was the same for public works, for transportation, mobility and parking, and for the health department. Keep in mind that those departments will take further reviews under, they will undertake further reviews through the zoning and the building permit process. So the departments haven't finished their review, but they conducted their preliminary review for the purposes of this hearing and the necessary approvals that are to be given at this stage. But for building permit, public works will be required to to review again. The fire department will be required to review again. The health department will have to issue a food service license. This food is going to be provided on the premises. Those are all additional permits and approvals that take place subsequent to your approval, should you deem it appropriate to approve this project. I think Eric Lindquist addressed the parking discrepancies that were brought to our attention by staff and he has indicated those on the plans. Let me see. WPCA, copies of the documents were sent to WPCA. That approval was not secured. I don't know why they didn't submit anything further to P&amp;Z. We received no questions from them. But as you typically do, if there is a municipal department that has not issued a sign off, you make that a condition of approval. She mentioned perhaps a post operative operative follow-up traffic study. This commission has made that a standard condition of approval, that six months post occupancy, a follow-up traffic study is undertaken. Miss Cici asked about the distance between the main entrance to where perhaps overflow parking could take place in the main lot. That's about a block's difference. It's a distance. It's really not that far. And there is a sidewalk on that side of the property from the new entrance to the car club to where that additional parking is in front of the Norton building. But keep in mind, there are forty something spaces directly in front of the entrance, then there are another seventy seven, just a few paces down in front of the old talk tours and Norton entrance. The the use may attract rodents. They're concerned about odors. Again, these will be addressed by in the in the building permit process, certainly with the health department. The Danbury site, the Danbury site is operational. And as a matter of fact, we contacted the zoning enforcement officer in Danbury to inquire about the status of that use and how it affects the neighborhood, if at all. And we were advised that there have been no issues with the operation of that car club. And it has been in compliance. There have been no issues with respect to non-compliance. A member can join and not store a car. So if that member can join and becomes a member, then they can have a member sponsored event. So sure, there could be a member sponsored event by someone who doesn't store a car there, but that's not prohibited. As far as the wetlands on the property were concerned and for the review, there is no regulated activity taking place within the hundred foot upland review area of the wetland or the water course. So there is no jurisdiction diction exercised by the conservation commission and no permit was necessary. The blight ordinance and the issues on the property with respect to blight, that's not a zoning issue. That is strictly with the a different department, namely the building department. The blight issues that had been identified are being addressed by the property owner. And again, that's not a zoning issue and it's not a consequence of your evaluation of this application. There are no zoning violations on a property. And there are certainly penalties and remedies that the city has at its disposal, whether those be fines, whether those be injunctive relief, whether those be actions brought in superior court, the city has ways of of enforcing conditions of approval and bringing properties into compliance should they violate conditions of approval or the zoning regulations. I'm glad to see that Miss Cici doesn't oppose the project in principle. And we too are happy and would agree to reasonable conditions that are appropriate for this proposal. And we certainly anticipate that you and your your wisdom in evaluating it will impose those conditions that you deem appropriate and necessary. Ms. Olson from Heron Court, the front entrance to this car club on the north side of the building to the the prop, the southernmost side of the Metro North railroad tracks is approximately nine hundred feet. It's two and a half football fields away. So Heron Court and the properties on Swale and Howard and Fordham, they're separated from where this car club component square footage is by the railroad tracks, by parking that is right now occupied by Metro North and by part of the the eastern end of the existing building. So I wanted to be clear that that's where she lives and where some others who have testified tonight who live in that area, they live almost two football fields away from the entrance to the site. Their properties may be a hundred feet from the property line, but they're not a hundred feet from where the entrance to this portion of the building is. Again, I think Mr. Pistor was very clear that this is not a use that would ever contemplate revving of engines or doing donuts in the parking lot or or driving the cars around as if there's a small Grand Prix going around the property. People come, they drive their car in and they store it. And they'll maybe go to an event from time to time. If they want to take the car out, they'll take it out, they'll bring it back. We've already indicated there's going to be a cap on the number of members and there's cap on the maximum number of attendees at the larger events. See. Mr. Shakovsky indicated that perhaps a traffic light at the intersection of the driveway in Strawberry Hill, that's really not a possibility because the traffic generator does not warrant a traffic light at that location. So again, we are here for a text amendment and a special permit. You have a variety of conditions of approval, excuse me, standards of review that you have to apply to a special permit application. This text amendment is a reasonable and rational amendment. It provides, it makes clear what the applicant wants to do on the site. And then it provides a much needed resource for auto owners to safely secure their vehicles. And yeah, that's that's something that a zoning commission should be looking at all the time, regardless of the fact that you just revised your regulations. You are free in your exercise of your legislative capacity to amend your regulations whenever the time, experience and responsible planning for contemporary or future conditions require that. And that is state, that is a case called Konigsburg versus Board of Eld Alderman of the City of New Haven, two eighty-three, Connecticut, five fifty-three. Moreover, the court held that this liberal, this discretion is liberal and wide and zoning must be sufficiently flexible to meet the demands of increased population and evolutionary evolutionary changes in the field such as architecture, transportation and redevelopment. So you have within your power to consider this use because the use is one that the the populace looks for and doesn't have locally. Moreover, this proposal is consistent with the plan of conservation and development in that it healthy, vibrant cities are constantly evolving in big and small ways to remain desirable by meeting changing demands. That's P O C D, chapter twelve, page two twenty-three. And the adapter for use of a portion of this building addresses this goal and also the recommendation that in healthy cities, new uses emerge, old buildings are renovated and repurposed and new buildings are built. That's also on page two twenty-three. Finally, this proposed text amendment. Finally, this proposed text amendment reduces the POC's concern that if a place always stays the same, it risks stagnation and slowly being left behind, page two twenty-three again. And as you know, this building and this site has not seen activity in many, many years. It's not going to remain fallow forever. This is appropriate and a, and reasonable use of the property. We have identified in our moving papers and the special permit application, all of the conditions of approval. I don't think I need to go through them all again. It's in, our position on all of those is in the application. You've heard from experts in the field, all of whom have the background, experience and education to be qualified as experts to make the comments that they made. We believe this is an appropriate use for the property. It's a reasonable text amendment. And the special permit application requirements and standards have been met. We hope that you would be able to close the hearing tonight and possibly act on the application. We look forward to that, that action and the reasonable and appropriate conditions of approval that you deem appropriate in connection with that action. That closes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have, and I'm sure the remainder of our development team would do the same. Thank you.
Are there any final questions before we close the hearing? If there are no final questions, we will close the public hearing. And we will, there are two matters upon which we must take action. There's the putting the car club use within the S D L I zoning district and then the special permit authorization. So we'll start with the, the zoning change, the creating a car club use within the S D L I zone. Do you have that language, Brian? Can we put that up?
Yeah, and I'll put up, my, my preference for your consideration is that you consider staff's amendments to what the applicant had proposed. So we'll start with working off that, if that's okay.
Perfect.
Let's see.
Big enough to see. Thank you.
No problem. So again, our first recommendation from staff was to include within the accessory use of live music that car clubs may have live music. Um, and then the second change, let's see if I find here, was to, instead of calling it storage of motor vehicles for the parking chart, was to just call it car club.
Okay, so our club is added there. Are those the?
Brian, quick question for you. It says it in the paragraph there, but not explicitly as a subitem here, but Article nine will be updated to include that car club definition. Is that right?
Right, so, um. Yes.
Oh, with the following modifications, I understand.
Right, so I only wrote out the modifications that staff proposed, and then everything else that the applicant proposed would be approved as part of this, which includes the definition of the car club.
Thank you.
Okay, does anybody else?
Can you show the definition of the car club on the screen again?
Sure. See if I included it. Here you go.
Brian, a small, small matter, but the second line from the bottom, I would change which to that. It's just a more preferable use. That may include, as opposed to which may include.
Not wrong, not wrong at all.
Yeah, the definition.
Right above where your cursor was.
Yep.
And he wants a change to that may include.
That's right. Thank you.
No problem. For an English teacher in a past life, Mr. Schulman.
An English major, anyway.
Ah, there it is.
Hey, are there any other comments?
Should we add that into that section of things we've now modified?
The, the live music. Want to look at the live music part?
Sure.
Want to get there?
So, um, I, I missed a little bit of the, um, the, the presentation, and I just want to just kind of follow up on something that Diane Cici put on the table. And I want to know, was that addressed by Attorney Sushi about the values of the cars and the assessment for taxes?
Uh, it was, it was addressed by her. Uh, and it may be something that we wish the Corporation Council to look into.
Can that be put on the resolution as a condition?
Um, I don't think it belongs there, frankly. I think it's simply something the staff can do.
Isn't that one of those things that we could shoot, like staff could do? But if we wanted to like more officially, like we could send a letter saying, can you please let us know how this works?
Yeah, we could talk with the Tax Assessors Department as well.
That was an excellent point.
Now, that certainly doesn't go in this section by, in the change to the zoning regulation.
It wouldn't be part of any of the approval, but it is something that we could do.
Right.
Exactly.
And Anna, here's that language.
Yeah, so, um, so I think you've got ordinance, the Norwalk Noise Ordinance Control Ordinance.
Yes, you're right.
I'm just trying to keep up with Lou. And so how, you know, for those of us that are not super familiar with the City of Norwalk Noise Control Ordinance, does this, this portion would allow live music and amplified music within the club? Right? Or is this?
So this would allow it within and outside, provided that it complies with the noise ordinance as written.
And then one of the possible conditions of approval for the special permit speaks more specifically to outside music and stuff.
Yeah, yeah. So you say you have two options. You could, or, I mean, you could choose both options, I guess. Um, the first is within this live music accessory use, you could say car club, provided that it's only indoors. Or you can put it specific to the special permit approval.
I'm fine with addressing it on the special permit approval. I just want to make sure I understood how the two work together.
I agree with you on that. I feel like it fits better in the special permit. Yeah.
Yeah, I agree as well. Okay, any other comments? Is anybody ready to make a motion?
I'll move to approve this amendment.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Eight seconds. Um, I think we should do a roll call.
Sure. Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Langallis?
Yes.
Mr. Bashnik?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yes.
All right, that is unanimous on the text amendment.
Okay, now we'll move on to the special permit.
Yes, I'll pull that back. Um, so I'll, I'll take. Uh, Anna, do you want to take a stab at the live music component? And then this highlighted text was just something I quickly drafted based on the traffic discussion. That's also new. Um, so open to suggestions on that as well.
Yeah, so, um, I'm not, I'm not necessarily against there being music outdoors, there being barbecues outdoors. I think it's, it's a huge space. I can see it making sense if it was limited. You know, no more than once a month or something like that, or twice a month. Um, but I think if we are going to limit the music just being as specific as possible because of the challenges that have happened with enforcement in town, I don't have any recommended change to the language, but just wanted to, to, to speak to that.
The applicant represented that the live music would be indoors, so we could specify that the live music will be indoors.
Well, I wonder, I'm, I'm fine with that as well, but then I wonder how it interacts with item five that events held outdoors are subject to the public gatherings and special events of the city's ordinances? Like if those ordinances would allow, would one take precedence?
I would think if we put special language in saying that, um, live mu, music and live music are limited to indoor use, that takes precedence over um, what, whatever five says regarding music.
Would that be different?
You want to jump in on that one?
I would agree with what you just said, Mr. Schulman. Thank you.
I have a question about that. I don't know if it's directed to Steve, but let's just hypothetically say the Halsted Building wanted to have an outdoor band. Would they be held to a different standard because it's a residential building versus this because this is a quasi-commercial building?
Uh, I think how the noise ordinance is written is, um, your proximity to, I don't know if it's a residential zone or a residential property. So there's different thresholds for how loud noise can be depending on uh, your proximity to a specific user zone. Steve, let me know if I'm right or wrong on that.
I think you're right, and I think that just thinking about that site, you have ninety-five to the north, the train tracks to the south, and sound can travel with, you know, and with the, how the weather impacts at it. So measuring the impacts from that will be pretty interesting to see how that would actually come into play. So it's really hard to gauge that. So I think the other thing I was just thinking about that, you know, they might, if they're doing a barbecue, they might have a speaker out there. So yeah, I think you got it. You know, you can take the applicant at his word, which is probably the, the, you know, if you wanted to go that route with a condition or just, you know, qualify it to comply with the noise ordinance, so just trying to think of every eventuality.
What's the conclusion that we're coming to here?
My feeling is, um, I mean, if I had to guess, the neighbors clearly will be more comfortable with not allowing amplified music.
Outdoors.
Out, out, outdoors. Um, we haven't heard significant concerns about that, about, about taking that action uh, from the operator. So I'd just as soon include the language that only permits music indoors.
Yeah, I, I agree. Let's do that, if ever, unless somebody disagrees. And then we will include the language that's already in five, which essentially says that if there's an outdoor event, they'll obey the law, right?
Right.
Well then, why don't we leave it to the law rather than to this particular application? Because then we would have to do it on subsequent applications.
No, the special permit, we have a fairly wide flexibility when it comes to a special permit. Um, so I, I don't think that people can throw this back in our face uh, with another applica, well, I mean, they can do whatever they want, but I don't, uh, uh, I don't think they, they could win the argument.
So Lou, maybe because you've been doing this for a longer time, if say Shore and Country or Shore Haven, because that's a club, do they have to have their bands inside? Do they have the same limitation?
Uh, it's a good question. I, and I don't know the answer, but I don't think uh, putting the statement here will affect them in any way.
Well, and to my, I'm trying to make the point that it would be unfair to this applicant if other clubs, whether they're a car club or a country club, don't have that restriction, why would we impose it on this applicant?
Well, for the reason I said, that I, 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 I think it's something the neighbors would be happier with. Um, and, you know, um, I'd, I'd like to be as sensitive as, as, as we can be, particularly given, um, uh, the direction in which we seem to be moving on this application.
And also, right, that the applicant isn't necessarily opposed to that condition or saying that outdoor music is like a key component of their business. So I think the logic is if they're fine with it, why not include it? And if in the future, they wanted to request to change it possibly along with like the points that other clubs have it, and there haven't been any complaints, and this is their plan, they could always come back and make that request.
I agree with that as well.
I guess that's true.
Why don't we, live music shall only occur indoors and, and then put the, then all outside events shall comply with, you know, the language that was in five previously. So that if there's an outside barbecue, it's making it clear that they will comply with all appropriate ordinances.
And so it's also keeping with the purpose of the space because it's number one, a car club, but number two, an event space.
What?
So the, 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 the language, this additional language also keeps, keeps in with the purpose, the scope of the building because the building, the purpose is car storage, a car club where people can convene and, and, and store their luxury cars in a, in a space that's indoors. But it's secondary as a social club. I mean, that's social, but you know, maybe an event, an event every now and then. So I think that having number five there is a good idea because it's not, as to Tammy's point, it's not bleeding over into other, um, venues that have nothing to do with this car club.
Right. How, how are we about putting that language that was in five at the end of?
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, we have, I just moved it down to six. I don't know if that's okay, if you wanted the language changed somehow.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I didn't even see that.
That's okay. It's got split between the pages.
Okay.
I understand that the, um, anticipated traffic isn't enough to put in a stoplight at that corner. But, you know, I've also seen a lot of speeding around that curve, and the more vehicles you bring in, the more the people that live on the other side have trouble getting out. I wondered again, this would be the type of thing for maybe Steve to talk to somebody else about. But with this talk of Norwalk getting, um, speed, speed cameras where they give you an automatic ticket, or, um, or if they could have one of those signs that shows how fast you're going, or just, hmm, I don't know, be open to like ways to address those possible concerns.
Of how fast you're going. That's, that's a good idea.
Yeah, agreed. I, I loosely recall that being a component of the MTA application, um. Uh, I, I don't know if staff recalls specifics on that, but I, I recall that being something at least I advocated for on that one. So I hope, hopefully that's coming, but we'll see.
Yeah.
Why don't we, why don't we? We can do it outside, outside of these requirements, just ask the staff to have a conver- conversation. Um. With the department regarding.
GMP about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's what I'm saying. I just.
This is beyond our scope. You know, we don't do. This isn't what we do. You know, we don't do. Automatic ticketing.
Right, but what we do do, what we have done is said, can you talk to this department about this? Or could you write a letter saying that we're concerned about? This, and I'm just saying it. I, I don't think we should. Put. I don't think we need to put anything further in these conditions related to traffic. But I do think there's something else that, that we should do related to the traffic concerns that wouldn't be written on this document.
And that does seem to be a major concern of the, the residents in the area.
Agreed. Related to that, can we look at number four, which Brian had highlighted of the, the follow-up traffic study? So I, I think that's a good idea and like one suggestion I have to maybe shrink this a little bit more is. Uh, to have it conducted during one of their peak months, which they identified as July or August, but maybe we just specified as like peak for like. Them and just in case like, I don't know, F1 changes their schedule or whatever it may be, uh, to account for that. So that way it's like. Six months after opening and like during a peak month or something like that, um. Our peak timeframe, um, just to ensure that, uh, we're, um. The, the supposed traffic counts based on like their best estimates using what data that they had available to them, uh, come up to be accurate or. Um, or inaccurate and give us an ability to, to see what additional measures might be required for traffic. Does, does that make sense? Does anyone have any thoughts on adjustments to that?
Sounds really good.
Good.
Yeah, just. I, I just think we need to keep in mind if we, if we want it to be peak months. We're talking about next summer, not this summer, but the following summer.
Yep. Which may be sufficient time for it to like gain membership to, to have meaningful.
Well, they first have to do their fit out, which is going to take some time.
Yeah.
Could even, it could even be the following summer.
Sure.
Do those follow-up traffic studies that. Maybe an automatic part of our conditions now may not be, do those get posted to the project's, um, webpage?
Uh, we could do that. I mean, how this is worded is, it would be presented back to you for review. And it's almost just informational at that point so that you guys have a picture of what had been approved and what it's doing for, for traffic impacts.
I think it's really helpful to do that for the community.
Okay.
Agreed. Brian, quick follow-up on that. Um, when it's presented back to us informationally, um, do we have any ability to? To request or make adjustments to conditions like if. If it's over, uh, let's say their traffic study is way undercounting by some significant margin and we'd like to, um, impose some additional changes, like is that? Something we're able to do at that point in time or?
I think you'd have to probably include it as part of this, as these conditions.
That's not a concern I have based on the data we've seen. Um, I, I'm not sure if anybody has concerns in that regard and would like to include any additional language there to. Give us flexibility in that future state.
I think in all cases where we include. A six-month or a follow-up traffic study. It should include language that. The commission may. May date to request changes based on the results of said study. If, if it has to be written out, it, it seems like that's the whole point of it. No?
Yeah, well, yeah, we might need to. Not eat again if you're not going to do anything if there's a problem, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Not sure if it's legal.
Yeah.
Well, we, we reserve the right to change your conditions of approval six months from now.
If your traffic study on the ground shows something like. Significantly different than what you predicted would happen.
Right.
Hey. Uh. Now. We have a motion and we have a second. Correct?
I, I don't think so. Yes, yeah.
Are we ready now to take a?
Can I suggest one more change? Sorry.
No problem.
For item two, one of the things that, um, was discussed back and forth was about the, the capacity and I, I think there was some confusion about like portions of the venue. Uh, that would be used or not used for events by, by the public at least. Uh, I'm curious if anybody else, um. Would be supportive of maybe removing the language related to restricting three hundred to just a portion of the, um, space and just saying. Three hundred people to the space at a time, um, and in order to. Uh, curb concerns that there'd be more than three hundred people total, uh, using this, um, car club.
Right. I mean, Chaiman, I'm not really sure what you're suggesting, taking the three hundred out or leaving it in.
Uh, leaving it in, but, um, adjusting the language number two here where it currently says that the portion of the building designated for member-sponsored events. Chava maximum attendance capacity of three hundred and just saying that. Um, like. Events at the facility have a maximum capacity of three hundred people. And so that way it's not. Uh, like I, I think there was some concern in public comments about. Uh. Other things that might be outside the member-sponsored event area being used for. Or, uh, having more people in them and having more capacity for people. Um, and some of the testimony people were, uh, sharing that they were concerned about way more than three hundred. So basically the, what I'm proposing is, uh, does it make sense to just cap? Three hundred people for the overall. Use and not. Uh, specific to events. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but what was the fire department's limit?
Yeah, that we have that information, yeah. Did we?
Was that mentioned during the presentation? That anybody call in about that? I think Diane mentioned something about.
I think the fire department approved.
Yeah.
Yeah, but what's the limit?
I don't think we know what their limit was, but given the size of the space, I would guess it's. Technically higher than three hundred.
Hmm. But so I think, Chaiman, what you're trying to say is if they had a wedding. That was a club member had a wedding and there were three hundred people at the wedding, that then you would suggest that nobody else. No other members could use the club at that time. Let's just say there were fifty people that wanted to use the club while the wedding was going on. You would prohibit that.
That's, that's how I would read this. Yeah, to curb or to address some of the concerns the public had about, uh. Um, use of the site exceeding three hundred people.
Sure. Oh, I would just go back to what other clubs have. If you're having a wedding at. Shore Haven. And you have three hundred guests. Can other members of the club use the club?
Yeah, I would think.
No, I'm not a member here, but I think that's a little restrictive and maybe out of.
I would imagine this.
Nobody can work at home. You know, nobody can do, have their coffee and work from the space if there's an event. You know, that.
Or it's essentially saying that events are capped at. Two fifty-ish or like it, it's lowering the bar. I, I'm fine with it the way it is.
I, yeah, I am too. I am too.
I don't think we need to make it more.
It's perfectly clear the way, the way it is.
Great.
Okay, we ready to take a vote now, do you think?
Yes.
Okay, how about a roll call, Ryan?
Sure.
If we get a motion second, sorry, I interrupted that before, so.
We did a motion in second, I believe. Did we?
I don't, I don't think so. If, if we did, I'll take a second.
Well, I, I will move, I will move to approve.
Okay, you move to approve. Who was second?
I was second.
Okay, Anna seconding, and then we will go to the roll call. Thank you.
Mister.
Just to be, you guys are doing, uh, you're voting on the motion as you guys just modified the conditions, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, Mister Williams.
Yes.
Miss Jordan Byron.
Yes.
Mister Bryce?
Yes.
Mister Bashnik?
Yes, and I'm very glad that this application came in. I think it's the best. One of the best possible uses for the space and will be really good for Norwalk.
Miss Lane Dallas?
Uh, yes, and I, I also. Think it's an interesting use of the space, but I did like Anna's idea that. For us to recognize that we don't have any big event spaces in Norwalk. It's an embarrassment that to say, for example, the mayor's ball has to go to Stanford. We used to have Continental Manor or whatever it was called on, uh, Main Street. So. Anyway. I think. I'm approving.
Mister Schulman?
Yes.
Miss Linkowski?
Yes.
And Miss Wells?
Yeah.
All right, that's unanimous.
So unanimous.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Have a good evening. And now I think we need to take a break.
Yes.
Or I at least need to take a break. Uh, we will take a. A ten-minute break. Is that what we used to do, Lou?
Yeah, ten or fifteen, well.
Yes.
I'm back at nine fifteen. That's thirteen minutes.
So what do we decide, a ten or fifteen?
Come, start at nine fifteen.
Probably eleven and a half now, yeah.
Okay.
Nine oh two on my official clock.
We'll start again that now. It will start again at nine fifteen. Okay. But, hey, I was. So we should proceed with our next matter. Our next matter is. Twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three, R slash S P. Glazer Group LLC, One River Road. Proposed zoning regulation text amendment. To Article Four regarding the C D dash. Eleven dot one L zone, excuse me. And the Silvermine Tavern District Overlay Zone to permit specific commercial uses. In conjunction with a special, special permit application. To allow for meetings, recreational activities, community gatherings, events. And special events within an existing historic structure. There'll be a public hearing and then a report and recommended action. Uh, is, who is here representing, uh? The applicant, Glazer Group LLC.
Good evening, Madam Chair. My name's Lisa Feinberg and I will be representing the applicant tonight.
Good, thank you.
May I proceed?
Yes, please do proceed.
Okay, may I share my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Can we all see that?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, for the record, my name is Lisa Feinberg. I'm a partner with Carmody Torrent, Sandac and Hennessy. I'm here tonight representing the property ownership entity Glazer Group LLC. And the property owners, the Glazers. Uh, with me tonight is my colleague, Dan Chapel. So for housekeeping purpose, I do want to note just for the record that all required notices were timely provided and copies have been included in the file. Um, as, uh, you all know, we are here in connection with two applications that seek to. Bring clarity to the approved use of the barn on the Gray Barnes campus. As you may recall, we appeared before you informally back in November with a request that you confirm. That events were permitted in the barn. Uh, while we continue to assert that events were contemplated and approved by the commission in two thousand and fourteen. We have filed the applications before you tonight in response to Mister Kleppen's request and to hopefully. Resolve any questions around how the barn may be used. So the first application before you is a text amendment, uh, which confirms that events with and without live music are permitted on the property. And the second is a special permit application requesting approval to host these events, um, in the barn in accordance with the proposed text. Uh, while we have provided a good amount of background on the Gray Barnes property, um, back in November. For the record, I would like to start with some of the same context and background tonight, so please forgive me for any repetitiveness. So the property is part of the campus known as Gray Barnes on the Silvermine River, uh, which is located at the intersection of River Road and Perry Avenue. And of course, adjacent to the Silvermine River. Today, it is in the C D one L and Silvermine Tavern Village District Overlay Zone, your O S T V D. It's an overlay created for the uses that are really out there today. On the Gray Barnes property, uh, these uses are housed in a collection of carefully restored and reconstructed historic buildings, including. Uh, the tavern, which was formerly known as the Silvermine Tavern and Inn. The inn, um, which consists of six beautiful suites. The mercantile, which is a market and a neighborhood cafe with apartments above and of course, the barn, um, a community event space. The property also includes four single-family cluster homes known as the village. These are over here. And the Glazers, uh, private residence is directly next door to the inn. So today, the neighborhood is thriving, um, in part due to the success of Gray Barnes, but the uses taking place on the site today have deep roots in this neighborhood. The Silvermine Tavern and Inn operated from this location from nineteen twenty-nine until two thousand and nine. Uh, like the tavern today, the Silvermine Tavern was a landmark in this community. With seating to accommodate up to two hundred people, it was also the perfect place to celebrate life's big events. Weddings, bar and bat mitzvahs, retirement parties, anniversaries, these all took place at the Silvermine Tavern. It was also known for its weekend jazz nights and for hosting community group meetings. Um, for most of its eighty-year tenure, the Silvermine Tavern flourished, um, but in its later years, the owner saw a significant decrease in patronage and. Ultimately had to make the hard decision to close their doors in two thousand and nine. Between two thousand and nine and two thousand and fourteen, when Mister Glazer and his wife purchased it, the property fell into a state of significant disrepair. Uh, by way of example, you can see some of the fire damage, uh, to the inn here on this slide. With a passion for historic preservation and restoration, the Glazers believed that they could rehabilitate and revitalize these buildings to retain an important mainstay in the Silvermine neighborhood. But in order to do so, they understood the property would need to operate as a campus with the tavern and inn as the focal point. But not necessarily the finance, financial engine for the business. In two thousand and fourteen, Glazer Group submitted two applications to facilitate their vision. The first was a text change application to modify the Silvermine Tavern Village District Regulation. Which was the precursor to the current overlay regulation. There were multiple changes, but one of the key changes was to permit cluster housing. This was important because the sale of these homes would help finance the historic renovation of the other buildings. All of the longstanding uses on the property, including. Those which were customary and incidental to the principal uses were also maintained by the text. The second was a special permit application to permit the restoration of the historic buildings, the construction of new cluster housing. And the construction of a two thousand square foot barn, and this was, um, application sixteen dash thirteen S P. Both of these applications were approved by the commission. The restoration of these beautiful buildings was completed. And the Glazers have been successfully operating within the parameters of these approvals ever since. And you can see the transformation on these next few slides. So this is. The campus, uh. Previously, this is the tavern and inn, uh, this is the parking lots or the field where everybody parked, uh, before and then the, um. The, what is known as the mercantile, the, the country store was over here. And then this is of course, the campus today. You can see it significantly cleaned up. Um, with the barn here and the new cluster homes. And these are some images of each of the, the Gray Barnes buildings. This is the inn, the mercantile. These are some of the homes in the village and of course, the barn. These are some of the interiors of those buildings and the exteriors. So as you know, uh, more recently, a question was raised regarding the permitted use of the barn, specifically whether it was permissible to host events there. We believe strongly that the record from two thousand and fourteen supports the notion that the barn was approved for use with events, but some disagree. Which is what brings us here tonight. The protos, the proposed text change, uh, is relatively straightforward. The goal was to eliminate any ambiguity with regard to how the Gray Barnes campus operates and. What exactly may take place in the barn. So anything new that we've proposed is shown in red on here. In the purpose section of the current text, it already permits uses that are compatible with the principal uses and I've, I've highlighted that language. I've already explained the long history of hosting events on the site, but we took things a step further by explicitly. but we took things a step further by explicitly listing meetings, activities, gatherings and events as compatible uses for the inn restaurant and the country store. And by noting that sometimes the uses operate separately and sometimes they operate together. In other words, I may just come to dinner at the tavern or grab a coffee at the mercantile, or I may attend a special event which incorporates multiple spaces. In the section that speaks about the permitted size and location of the barn, we added language specifically noting that the structure may be used for against events. Again, just reiterating um, what seems to be missing today. We also created a new use category called event space, which is only permitted following special permit approval in the O S T V D. Events as an accessory use to another principal use such as the tavern or inn have long been permitted, just as they are throughout the city. So this is really just to clarify that events may specifically take place in the barn, both in conjunction with the other buildings or on its own. Lastly, the text confirms that live music is permitted in the O S T V D. Again, this is nothing new. Live music has taken place in this district since at least the beginning of the twentieth century. The special permit application is also pretty straightforward. It merely seeks your approval for the barn to continue to be used as event space. As I've mentioned, the barn is just one of several buildings on the Gray Barnes campus, which you can see here. Uh, on any given day, each of these buildings may function on its own, or it may be an individual component in a broader experience. For example, the barn may be rented out for a farmer's market or a yoga class, events that do not require the use of any other Gray Barnes buildings. Alternatively, I may rent the entire campus for a fabulous wedding weekend where my bridal party stays at the inn, has breakfast at the mercantile, a ceremony in the barn and dinner and dancing in the tavern. As you know, when considering a special permit, you are supposed to consider public health, safety and welfare. We submitted a detailed narrative explaining how the proposal meets all of the specific special permit standards. So for purposes of this discussion, I just want to hit the high points. Uh, much like the Silvermine Tavern and Inn, Gray Barnes has become part of the fabric of the Silvermine neighborhood and the barn is an important component of the Gray Barn's success. It's reconstructed from reclaimed wood, which was salvaged from an antique barn in upstate New York and modernized to serve as a gathering space. The barn is a beautiful visual asset to the Silvermine neighborhood and serves a vital purpose for the Gray Barnes operation. While events at Gray Barnes are certainly special, they are not large. Collectively, the barn and tavern can only accommodate a maximum of ninety-seven people. This is basically half of what the Silvermine Tavern held. The barn itself is only fifteen hundred square feet. By way of easy comparison, the new homes Mr. Glazer built in the village are about twenty-five hundred square feet and the home directly to the north of the barn is about thirty-five hundred square feet based on the tax rec- records. So folks could host more people in their homes than the barn can legally accommodate. To protect the safety of his guests and the neighbors, Mr. Glazer has invested in a professional valet operation that is there every day and hour that the tavern is open. Um, and they efficiently, efficiently maneuver vehicles to and from the parking lot. Guests of the rec- restaurant or a particular event will pull up to the tavern in either direction. Um, and they're immediately greeted by a valet attendant. You likely experienced this yourself during your site visit. This is the same location where the Gray Barnes Tavern and the Silvermine Tavern before it received deliveries. So people pull up, that the valets come out and they park in this lot over here. When multiple buildings are used during an event, any change of venue is calmly facilitated by Mr. Glazer's event staff. Those who are able-bodied are led directly across the street and you can see those paths here in yellow. Anyone with mobility challenges is led out the side of the tavern through the coun- the courtyard and up to the southern side of the barn, a path that avoids steps. And because these are historic buildings, it may not be a perfect solution, but it's a solution that works safely. Although the restrooms in the tavern are on the first floor, high-end portable restrooms with flushing toilets and water, uh, including ADA restrooms are brought in for events uh, to minimize the number of trips across the street. These restrooms are set up on the west side of the barn, so over here. Um, screened from the neighbor to the north and from the street. To further enhance safety, Mr. Glazer is also happy to accept the recommendation of the city's uh, Director of Transportation Mobility and Parking about installing a historically sensitive crosswalk connecting the tavern to the barn, um, at Mr. Glazer's cost. In terms of actual uh, number of parking spaces required, there really is no measurable change. The tavern was parked under the prior regulation at one space per forty-five square feet of active floor area. Today, there is about just over fourteen hundred square feet of active floor area, which requires thirty-two parking spaces. Based on the parking requirement for other similar uses without fixed seating, the barn should be parked at one space per five hundred square feet or three spaces. So this equates to a total parking requirement of thirty-five spaces before the valet credit and twenty-six spaces after the valet credit. And I do want to note that there was an error in the required parking in the chart I submitted with the materials. Apparently I was struggling with addition that day, um, but the numbers you see here are correct. So the parking lot was approved for uh, valet accommodate, accommodating up to sixty-five spaces in twenty fourteen. And you can see uh, that valet plan over here uh, in the corner. Um, I know you received correspondence contending that the parking lot can only fit forty-five cars and I believe it was based on this aerial image. Um, but the, this image just wasn't at full capacity. So I've attempted to show uh, how the additional cars would be added um, in keeping with this plan when necessary. In addition, the sixteen spaces provided for the inn and mercantile are also available to valet if not in use and while not required, the Glazers also secured use of another twenty spaces off-site for staff or overflow parking at the Silvermine Art Center, um, which is utilized for busier evenings. So this is all to say that there is plenty of parking for the fifteen hundred square foot barn, which again does not increase the maximum collective capacity of ninety-seven people. The application materials also um, include a sound engineering report prepared by acoustic distinctions. The report confirms that by adhering to the sound level limits provided in the report, noise levels from the barn will remain within the limits of the Norwalk Noise Control Ordinance. Specifically, sound levels within the barn should not exceed about ninety D B A during the day and eighty D B A in the evening in order to continue to comply with the maximum of sixty D B A during the day and fifty D B A in the evening at the receptor property line. I know there are some questions submitted about enforcement. So in order to remove any human error, um, they recommend the installation of a compressor or sound limiter, which is technology that will ensure the threshold is not exceeded. And we're happy to accept a condition of approval requiring the installation of a sound system with this technology as well as a condition requiring conformance with the noise ordinance. To be clear, we're not asking to change the noise ordinance or apply a different sound standard than is already applicable to the barn property. The maximum amount of noise is based on the receiving property. In this case, all of the adjacent properties are in the O S T V D and subject to the same maximum sound levels, whether the barn is used for events or not. We think requiring the barn to implement this sound limiting technology and requiring that the barn be required to comply with the noise ordinance is an appropriate solution because it is the same standard other uses with live music are held to, even those surrounded by residential homes like the Weeburn Country Club. As a neighbor themselves, Mr. Glazer and his wife are sensitive to the residential neighbors and committed to being good neighbors. They employ eighty people at Gray Barnes regularly and about half are Norwalk residents. Um, and if you, hopefully you saw in the materials, uh, the value of the Gray Barnes property and the surrounding properties has increased dramatically since Mr. Glazer and his wife invested here. However, this does not mean that placing commercial and residential uses in close proximity, no matter how long they've taken place there is without its challenges. This is why uh, we have also submitted a number of proposed conditions of approval in an effort to place some guardrails around the event use. Um, we, I've, I've already noted a few of them. I know you also received them in your packet, so I'll just run through them uh, quickly and, and highlight the ones that I think need to be discussed. Uh, I think, you know, number two is important. Um, it makes clear that our intention is to limit capacity to ninety-seven people combined with the tavern and the barn and/or. So one may be in use, the other may be in use, both may be in use. In no event can there be more than ninety-seven people at any given time. We're going to comply with everything from the Fire Marshal's Office and the Health Department. Um, we're not going to have additional restaurants seating in the barn. Uh, number five, uh, we would be happy to extend the solid fencing that uh, is on the border uh, to the north. It doesn't go all the way east at this point. We're happy to do that. Um, I don't know if we can, I, I know uh, Mr. Glazer pointed out to me that there are already evergreens uh, planted there, so I don't know that we could fit more, um, but there is an evergreen screening. Um, and all parking would be behind that screening so that it could not be seen. We're going to comply with the valet parking plan, um, as we've amended it. The live music, we uh, propose that we shut it down by eight P M on Sunday uh, through Thursday and ten P M on Friday and Saturday. Um, thought this, that was reasonable. Um, of course, we'll comply with the noise ordinance and uh, number nine is that condition I referenced about including a compressor or a sound limiter. Um, number ten again is getting all of the necessary approvals so you all can feel secure that we're not doing anything that uh, the city hasn't already approved. And number eleven is any violation um, would be reported back to you all. We also received um, the staff report with additional conditions for your consideration. Most of these were fine, um, but there are a few that we don't feel are appropriate or we would like to modify a bit. Um, the requirement for permanent restroom facilities may seem innocuous, but based on the significant expense that the Glazers have invested in defending a use that they believe was already approved and the lost revenue, um, while we've worked through this process, the requirement is troubling to them. It's just, it's an expense that they were not contemplating at this time. Uh, the portable restrooms are not your typical porta potties. They're high-end with working faucets and toilets and they're hidden from view from the street and the adjacent properties. We're also very hesitant to agree to limit the number of people permitted beyond the ninety-seven person septic capacity um, or the number of events, uh, particularly with the small events. Honestly, uh, we think it would handcuff their ability to host things like yoga or similar gatherings. And our strong preference is to address the concerns that have been articulated, such as the noise, um, and not limit the Gray Barnes business. Um, as I noted in the materials, these events are absolutely vital for the continued financial uh, viability of Gray Barnes. Lastly, um, the requirement for an annual permit, it's sort of a non-starter. The Glazers just can't run their business and commit to events without knowing they can continue to operate. And I, I would also suggest to you that I believe it's illegal, uh, based on Connecticut case law. So the Glazers are not asking for any special treatment. They simply want to operate in the same manner as other similar uses in the city. Um, and with that, I can uh, turn things back over to you all and take any questions that you have.
I have a question. When, um, for all the years that you're saying that this area was used for events without issue until two thousand and nine, whenever it fell into disrepair. Where did people park? Was there valet parking? Were there buses idling? How did that work?
Here, let me go back to the image. I think this is probably the best one. So when the Silvermine Tavern was in operation, this big field here was where people parked and there was no valet. I think people just sort of parked wherever they wanted. Um, I'm told that there were plenty of buses that they came in droves. Um, it sat two hundred people at a time. Um, so I think it was, it was a very busy establishment, but it operated, you know, in terms of parking a little bit differently.
He paved the parking lot and put up.
How's it? This is, the, yeah, so people, the, the parking area got smaller. Um, and when they built the, the housing and so that's why the valet was incorporated.
I have a question for you. I think this is more related to the tax amendment piece. Um, so I see that there's a new proposed use for event space. Um, it doesn't look like there's a, a definition existing for event space. Did, did you have a proposed definition for an event space?
So we sort of outlined it. Um, I, I know staff's working on a definition of event space as well, but I didn't specifically define it.
I, I don't know, does staff have a a definition or a, a thought of whether we should like wait to have that definition before we like move forward on the adoption of that as a, as a new use?
And I, I think, um, you could move forward with this. I, I, I took this in mind, kept this in mind and, you know, also cognizant of your last application about what that would entail, thinking, and thinking about other uses in the city. So it's meant to deal with those and some other things that we have going on. So I don't think anything we propose would run contrary to what's in this text.
I have two questions, um, for the attorney. Sorry, I can't say her name right at the second. Um, so no matter what type of event or events simultaneously occurring or one larger event, you only can invite ninety-seven people. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And you say that you will stick to that. So you won't have ninety-seven people in the barn and ninety-seven people in the inn?
No.
Okay, thank you. And then I thought I read in some of the material that you sent us, but then I couldn't find it and I was reading it late last night. Regarding music, whether it's live music, amplified music, or um, did Mr. Glazer somewhere say he, he would not have live music?
There was an email exchange between Mr. Glazer and his neighbor, Mr. Lane. There's been a lot of correspondence over the years and I wasn't involved at that point, but I do know at, at some point in the process, he said that. I spoke to him about that and he said, sure, I said that. And then after that, there are a series of other things that happened. So, you know, I, I can't tell you exactly what those things were. All I can say is that in order to have a successful event, he needs to be able to play music.
Li- like live musicians in the barn?
Live music is defined in your regs at this point as either a DJ or I think it, I, I, you know, I could pull the definition up, but it would include, you know, instrumental, it would include a DJ, um. It includes basically.
Amplified versus non-amplified. And would there ever be an occasion where there would be live music both in the barn and in the inn at the same time?
Um, no, I don't think so because, you know, the only time there would be live music in the barn is when there's a larger event. You know, if there's a concert or if there's uh, a wedding or a, you know, event with dancing in the, in the barn. And if that's happening, then the tavern is, you know, typically part and parcel of that event. Really, as it's been explained to me, the only time that the barn kind of operates on its own um, would be those smaller events. um would be those smaller events that I talked about, like yoga or a farmer's market or um, you know, a meeting, things that wouldn't include music in both. And I, I, we'd be happy to, you know, accept a condition that there couldn't be live music in both places at the same time.
Okay, and, and you're not doing anything to change the barn's structure as it is presently and or when we saw it on our little field trip?
No, unless there are certain things that need to be done to come into compliance with building code, but nothing, um, there's no floor area being added or anything like that. It would just be code compliance.
Okay, and is that building in any way, shape or form specially insulated to mitigate music it coming outside the barn?
No, not to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
What is the um role, if any, of um the um ancillary space with the uh plastic covering uh as your on-mill facing the restaurants off to the right?
At, at the tavern, like outside the tavern, in between the tavern and inn?
Yes.
I believe that they sometimes cover that courtyard area if for weather purposes, so it may be just an image at that time, like sort of like a tent.
And would that be used um as uh additional uh event space as well?
I think they use the entire property um and always have. And that's what's interesting, Mr. Schulman, is that nobody has argued that events can't take place as accessory to the tavern or to the inn um or even to the mercantile. That sort of thing happens all over the city all the time. It's just this, you know, moving people across the street to the barn um that has presented the question. Um, and I think more so, I guess, if it's a principal use versus, you know, when it's directly accessory.
And I mean, I, I appreciate um your uh extending uh the uh fencing. When I walked by this morning, I, I noticed that myself. Um, what about uh the, the condos uh above uh the barn? Um, there is a bit of a wall, but I'm wondering uh if there should be fencing above um in order to um add a li- uh some additional sound deadening uh to the condominiums there.
You talking about on this side?
Um, yes.
Um, I don't, I, I know we have, I'm not sure to, to answer the question, but I know we have um a letter of support from this neighbor. Actually, three of the four neighbors that live here have said they have no concerns um with what's been taking place in the barn. So I don't know that there's a sensitivity there. Um, but to the extent that there is or that you all want to guard against it uh as long as there's space, I think we would have, maybe I should go to a different image. I don't think that'd be a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So I have a question about the uh doors on the barn.
Okay.
Um, you indicated that the north and northern doors would be closed um during live music. What other doors are on the barn and is there any air conditioning in the barn?
There is uh A C and heat. Um, and there's doors on all sides, but the.
One set of doors would be closed only?
The sound study confirmed that we can, we can meet the noise ordinance uh with the other doors open. There, there was no difference with having the east and west and south. It was just the, the north that became a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
In the police reports where the police showed up and could hear the music and said it was, you know, quite loud, like, do you know if both sides of the doors were open? Looking at the sound report, I understand that it says that up to eighty or ninety is fine, but my concern is, well then what, what was it at on those nights?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I think the way that we're trying to ensure that that's not a problem moving forward is to install this technology that removes any sort of human error. It literally cuts it off at the maximum before we would exceed what's permitted uh by the noise ordinance.
Was there any consideration to trying that previously when all these complaints started?
I, you know what? To be completely transparent, I think that there's just a very contentious relationship there and I don't know what transpired, um, but we do want to try and fix it now.
Okay.
I'm Attorney Feinberg. So when, when a potential guest or um applicant, it might be the wrong word, but a user of the facility wants to have a special event there, um, are, they're informed that they can't have more than ninety seven people? And do, do you encourage the, the party that this is a residential neighborhood and that they need to be sensitive to, you know, the noise ordinances in the city and that they're perhaps more restrictive than the noise ordinances if you were in, say, a non-residential neighborhood in, I don't know, Sonoma has residences, but I can't think of a better neighborhood, but do you let the app know?
I'm not sure what they've done in the past. What I can tell you is that we certainly are happy to, to incorporate that into the contracts moving forward. Um, they will require that the, uh, any, anyone that, you know, wants to rent space there has to use the sound system. Um, the Glazer sound system, they will not allow uh for anything else and, and I'm happy to take that as a condition as well.
The max is ninety seven, that would include staff, restaurant staff, caterers, whatever as well, correct?
I believe that that's true and because anybody that could be using the restrooms.
So um so do they have a proposal of like what they're actually going to say is the limit for larger events like on their website, like max seventy five or something like that? Because.
Well, none of this has been incorporated yet, right? Because it's all before you, um, but those are all really good ideas and um, you know, we can, we can certainly do that moving forward.
Any, any other questions for Attorney Feinberg? If not, we can start with the uh public portion of this public hearing. Um, and before we begin, I want to emphasize that we have read all of the letters that have been submitted and it's really not worthwhile to repeat what you submitted in a letter. That takes up time and really doesn't advance your argument particularly. We're happy to hear from you, but uh we urge you not to repeat what you submitted in a written form because we can assure you that we read everything that was submitted in written form. Um, everybody gets a, one opportunity to speak. They, people need to say everything that they feel is important to say in that one opportunity because there won't be another opportunity for them to speak. There's no time limit on uh presentations. But we urge you to move forward as quickly as possible as it gets, it's sort of already late in the evening. Uh, so all of that having been said, uh, can we see Brian who is here to participate in the public hearing?
Sure, uh, so.
Hold on, right, right, I'm sorry, cut you off. Um, the, I did get some late emails this afternoon that I did forward out to the commission right before the start of your meeting at six P M. They are included in the record and we'll load them onto the application webpage tomorrow.
I say, thank you.
So for anyone who would like to speak, please use the raise your hand tool. You click that once it's located at the bottom of your screen and if you're downloading on the phone, you hit star nine. So first we have Kelly Cook.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Uh, give us your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Kelly Cook. I live at one seven six Perry Avenue. Um, I also have renovated, I owned and renovated one eighty-four Perry Avenue. Um, I have restored both of these homes um since two thousand twenty and love the Silver Mine area. I'm in favor of Gray Barns, um, all they do for the area. I did submit a letter, but I have a few more points that I'd like to say. Um, I'm in favor of this one because the community connection that Gray Barn serves as a hub for gatherings and fostering deeper relationships in our neighborhood. Um, the local economic boost, Grave, Gray Barns brings visitors here to the Silver Mine area from all over and enhancing not only Gray Barns, but the property values of everyone around and also other venues like Silver Mine Market, which is just down the street. Cultural enrichment um through the pop-ups and yoga classes um and the charming weddings and, you know, the magazine pictures that have been published. It uh brings a lot to this commu- community. Also, it's aesthetic value. The property is very well maintained and is very charming and adds visual appeal and characters and preserves the history of the Silver Mine area and the Silver Mine Tavern. And it really gives this area a sense of pride and I really love living here. And when I say where I live in Silver Mine, I say, you know, near Gray Barns and I'm very proud to live here. I have been witness to many events in the barn and I see so much joy in people's faces as they're gathering for a wedding or just community shopping and it just brings such a nice sense of community over here. So I love being a part of that. I've never had any trouble with any sort of traffic or noise. Um, and I feel that Gray Barns as a whole has been very respectful to the neighbors, myself included. So I'm in favor of this and thank you so much for listening.
Thank you.
Hey, next we have uh Mark. Just a reminder to say your full name and address for us.
Yeah, I'm Mark Carnell. I live at uh two ninety-five Silver Mine Avenue, uh about three houses down from the tavern. I think I would echo the, the prior speaker's uh support for the tavern. Um, I know the Whitmans, uh, we've actually moved here because of the tavern. Um, so really, uh, in my letter, I just stressed that there's certain things that, you know, we want to just make sure he's a good neighbor, so we are good neighbors. But I do want to take my time not to rehash what I wrote in my letter, but to ask Ms. Feinberg a question because I'm a little confused. So if you don't mind, Ms. Feinberg, um, he- here's my question. Suppose I uh uh rent out the barn for my granddaughter who lives in uh one of them in, in Wilton for a sweet sixteen party and it's ninety seven people with the staff. Does that mean Andy has to, and I'm not, I, I don't intend to use the market. Um, I don't intend to use the restaurant or the inn. Does that mean Andy has to shut down the restaurant and the market while my sweet sixteen party is going on? Because you said only ninety seven people.
That, um, Mark, your question will get addressed at the conclusion of the, all the public comments.
Okay. Then uh thank you for my time and uh next, next person.
Wait, next we have Joel Green.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the commission and staff, my name is Joel Green. Uh, I practice law in Bridgeport with the law offices of Green and Gross and it's my pleasure to appear before you this evening on behalf of Beverly Wright and Peter Lane. Ms. Wright and Mr. Lane own properties that uh generally abut the property. That's the subject of this application. Um, I have to uh echo the comments of uh some of the previous speakers and that um my clients want to see uh Gray Barns thrive. And uh they've been uh residents there and they appreciate everything that Gray Barns or most things that Gray Barns brings to the community. But they have um significant concerns regarding uh this application uh that really uh need to be addressed. And a- as the commission recognizes and as Attorney Feinberg uh indicated, there are some sort of hard limitations on the, on this use and uh the way it's positioned in this area. And those sort of limitations relate to obviously parking and traffic and parking capacity. They relate to septic capacity and notably they relate to uh potential noise and interference with the use and enjoyment by my clients and the peaceful use and enjoyment by my clients of their properties. And that's the great tension and that's uh what really needs to be balanced by this commission in considering this application. So I, I, you know, I, I have a sort of a longer presentation and a number of points I wanted to touch on, but there are some aspects of the presentation by the applicant that have given me pause and I appreciate the questions that the commission asked in response because I think in many ways, the application fails to provide the information that this commission and staff uh require uh in order to make the findings that you need to make uh in terms of the ruling on the special permit and in terms of sort of the jurisdiction of the commission on the proposed zone change. Uh, as my clients and I understand, if the use of the barn has never been a permitted or approved use, it is one that has occurred with uh, with some success and some challenges. And I think that uh my clients certainly have a different understanding of the origins and the purposes for which this commission allowed the barn to be constructed and allowed to be the barn, allowed the barn to be used. Uh, in terms of the documents that I think uh and the information that really isn't uh as a matter of fairness uh before the commission, well, let me begin with this. First of all, I, I note that there's some documents that were produced this evening that aren't in the record um that were presented by the applicant. I'm not sure that they will turn this application one way or another in terms of the commission considering it, but as I understand it, uh, there is a requirement that uh all of these uh documents be posted and uh to my understanding, that didn't happen. And uh also I hadn't seen the corrected document on parking. Um, it is one that's central to our argument. Uh, I would suggest that the application, well, the application doesn't meet your regulations as it's presently configured and there were some things that actually happened on the earlier application that you heard this evening regarding the uh car storage facility that sort of piqued my interest while I was listening to that. And I've been involved with the Norton site in the past, um, as the commission may recall on the application involving Metro North. But that caused me to take a look at the regulations and take a look at this application and it hadn't occurred to me till the commission asked a couple of questions. But I note that the application doesn't meet um the requirements uh of the zoning regulations and I would, and look, I really want to get to the sort of the quality of the application and the concerns that the commission has raised and I appreciate that. And I'm not looking to be difficult, but I think some of these documents are critical to the commission's consideration. First of all, uh, the regulations require a site plan and uh a, a site plan that complies with section eight point four, point five, point L of your regulations. and uh a site plan that complies with section eight point four point five point L of your regulations. And there is no compliant site plan. So why is that important? Because I've heard it thrown out tonight that potentially there would be a crosswalk offered. Uh, and honestly, as the commission considers it, if you're gonna have ninety-seven people and potentially be moving people from the barn to the inn, or I, I understand that uh uh Attorney Feinberg said that people with physical challenges are moved differently across the street. If there is to be a crosswalk, obviously, the commission would expect a site plan that shows where that is so that the commission and there's some review to assure that that is a safe crosswalk. Lighting, there is no detail on lighting and uh the applicant is seeking a use that continues after dark. Uh, and as late as ten P M., I understand that the barn is heated. That could include in the winter. Certainly, I think that in rule and finding and making the findings that this commission needs to make, certainly on the special permit, uh, you would need to be able to find that if this barn is in fact to be used for these events, that that use can be safe. Obviously, a, your site plan standards require uh all that detail. There were questions about the barn itself tonight and I have never seen the barn. Uh, but there were some interesting questions by the commission and your regulations would require some elevations of the barn where the exits are located specifically and sort of the design of the barn so that this commission could make decisions on uh the interior use of it. Where uh in a, in a meaningful way where if there, there's this proposal on porta potties that we can get into at another time. But is there a staging area for porta potties? Where is that? That should be shown, shown on a site plan. Uh. And again, certainly critically, again, location and detail on a crosswalk. Um, I note that and I went, as I went further, uh, the details on parking. Because what I've seen so far is there was a drawing attached that's in the record that shows sixty-five spaces that goes back to two thousand fourteen and tonight the applicant showed that drawing in a different configuration that I have never seen. One of the issues that we are going to be involved with is there are setbacks that were established by this commission in two thousand fourteen. As with any other application, I think that this commission would want to see where the setbacks are, where specifically the parking spaces are, and that should all be set out on a site plan. And uh uh, I know, a- and I have to say, the, the survey uh that was the only real uh s- signed stamp document that I saw is a survey that's dated from two thousand fifteen. Whereas uh there are always changes and there, I understand there's been some work done on this site and your regulations recognize that. So your regulations say that a survey has to be uh not less than six months old that is submitted to the commission. That wasn't done. So uh, so look, we find ourselves in a place where there are considerations uh that we want to address on, on, once again, parking, on noise, on the, on septic. Uh, I was surprised to hear that the applicant has eight, up to eighty employees and it suggested that uh, that ninety-seven would include uh employees potentially. Uh, so I think there's got to be a little bit more detail for the commission to understand what that is. Uh. I think uh that the applicant should submit a corrected parking document that we can see. And I'm offering of these, I, I'm pointing these things out uh now. Uh, because what I would propose and what I would urge the commission to consider so that we can get to the issues on this is that this hearing be held open and continued. Um, I've provided a pretty robust list, but really it's in your regulations and you can refer directly to uh the special permit uh regulations and specifically eight point four point eight E. And that specifically says that uh that such application shall conform to the requirements of these regulations and shall contend, goes on, shall contain the information and exhibits required under eight point four point five L as if it were an application for site plan review. And that only makes sense so that you can make those findings. So it would be my suggestion and my request uh and that the commission hold this matter open so that the applicant can do the work, provide the information that's required so that we can all address this in an educated way and in a way that that the regulations require. And if the commission wants to hear more public comment, uh, uh, I'm all for that. But I, I would ask uh Madam Chair uh for the uh hearing to be held open. Uh, after the documents are provided, I would propose to be able to address the commission uh uh based on those, on the documents that are required. And I'll go one step further. This is not a game of you know, of, of, of doing this publicly, but I had reached out to the applicant in January. And I do recognize and Attorney Feinberg and I have talked and there is a difficult relationship, but I had suggested that we get together, that we get the parties and council together, work through these issues. And uh, that did not happen. And I will formally say to the commission right now that my clients and I remain open to meeting with the applicant. Even if staff wants to participate, that would be great. And we'd like to resolve some of these issues and certainly narrow the issues that this that are great concern to my clients living just uh right next to the, the property. Uh, but it would certainly streamline the application. So for the moment, I am asking the commission if you would be willing to hold this hearing open. I note that it is ten fifteen. Uh, and would the commission consider holding this matter open uh and uh allowing me to address the commission on any issues that may remain after those documents are provided? That ends with a question mark right there.
My Madam Chairman, my recommendation would be to let Attorney Green continue, let the other public speak and then you can uh, speak to Ms. Feinberg about what her thoughts are on that before closing anything.
Yes, we should hear, continue to hear from the public. I believe.
Okay, next, uh, we had Roger Goodman. Roger, you just have to unmute yourself.
I apologize. Uh, uh, my wife and I have been residents, one river road, unit B almost for ten years. I lived down the road in New Canaan and I spent a phenomenal amount of time in the last thirty, forty years coming to the tavern, uh, when it was the tavern to listen to, to jazz. And when I found out uh what Mister Glazer uh was doing and I had seen some of the other properties he had built in other towns in, in Connecticut, specifically in, in Norwalk. I uh immediately uh called and asked that I wanted to be on the top of the list. Uh, I understood from the drawings, we saw those earlier from the Mercantile to the inn. It has been a joyous thing for my family and I've had a number of events there. Uh, um, uh, because of the Mercantile, because of the inn and the ability to have out of town guests stay at the inn, it has just been a- amazing to me. Uh, I, I listened to live music for years at, at the tavern, both inside and out. Sometimes I wonder why the issue comes up about sound, but uh, uh, myself and my family listened to music uh, uh, when Mister Whitman had Jazz Night. Um, living at the top here, uh, I have never had a problem uh with sound. I know an awful lot about sound. That was my career for fifty years. And so sound has never been a problem. Parking has never been a problem. Uh, I, I, I don't understand a lot of this, but I just wanted to say that between Marcia and Andy Glazer, they have done an incredible job and the way they've turned us around from seeing the pictures from old to new. And I am, uh, uh, I'm just wondering, not wondering, but my wife and I just hope that the commission will accept the Glazer's uh, 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 with this uh, application. Uh, because I think they're very, very important to this area and I thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Okay, next we had Peter.
Hi, um, thanks, uh, Peter Lane. Uh, you may have heard my name. Uh, I'm the neighbor to the north, the, the evil neighbor as one Andy likes to portray me as. Um, but uh, in any event, I, I, I do want to state that I think Joel was still speaking and wants to continue to speak, so, but I'll, I'll say my piece here. Um, and uh, and, and, and then we can continue, uh, of course. Um, but again, to clarify with Andy, uh, you know, there, there is an ill will. Um, there's just facts, right? I, I was here, oh, so for, for everybody's knowledge, I was, I'm at Three River Road uh with my family. We've been raising our family here in Silvermine for over twenty years and I bought the property from the Whitmans. Um, and we were very involved in the two thousand eight um, uh, Silvermine Tavern Village District creation. Uh, and this was years before Andy was even introduced to the project. And I think the facts and the history are important here because everybody, it seems to be lost in this mystery of how did we get here with this orphan barn that doesn't seem to be, have approvals? You know, the reality is, you know, Andy, uh, so those approvals in two thousand eight, let me state, here is the basis of approvals and Joel can also address this. Uh, when we studied the property in two thousand eight with Mike Green and Mike Ren uh with planning and zoning, uh, it was known and established uh at, in two thousand eight that the set, that the site, the property can only handle seventy-five hundred gallons of septic a day. That was the basis for everything that happened going forward. So the, the houses that uh came to be were us, the community who said to save the tavern because the tavern ground can't handle the affluent that, that, that the addition of cluster houses can create the economics and you reduce the restaurant, as Lisa said, it was two hundred uh and at its maximum capacity down to sixty seats, right? So that was the magic of the final Silvermine Tavern Village District approval. When Andy was introduced to the project, he understood that. He came in and he, he was gonna run a sixty-seat restaurant, okay? The septic system and uh, and he operated a sixty-seat set system. Uh, and the health department recently this past year counted a hundred and forty seats in the restaurant. That's a fact. You can talk to the health department. There were a hundred and forty seats counted inside and outside, okay? So he was, he was made to upgrade the system from sixty to the maximum capacity of ninety-seven. That's all the site can handle. It's it. And any more septic capacity uh between the houses and the tavern that has to pump the septic over reaches, it's close to the seventy-five hundred limit that is a D E E P restriction. Anything over the seventy-five hundred gallons is a sewage treatment-like facility. And that's just facts going back to two thousand eight that nobody seems to want to address. Sean knows it at the health department, but the information doesn't want to cross over from some reason to all the other departments. So the reality is all the site can handle is ninety-seven people, right? So there is no room for any activity at the barn technically, right? And so that's why when they approved it in oh eight, the reality was accessory barn with limited uses. It was so clear when it was written in two thousand eight. Farmer's market accessory uses related to the end like, like meetings and or offices, right? A- and maybe community functions is a great use and we're not against that and yoga is great and we support Gray Barnes. We really do. And we were support limited use of the barn. We think it's a nice little addition. But it's all about capacity and septic is the driver. It does not have the room. It does not, it does not have the room for any additional septic. So that's why they need the porta potties and porta potties are just a non-starter for a residential community. So it's just as, as somebody in planning zoning stated, it's their words, this is ten pounds of you know what in a five-pound bag, right? And that is actually affluent and septic issues that we're about, you know, that system could blow out. A- and that's how, that's why we have an accessory use with limited uses. So everybody needs to understand that. Then you go to the parking. The parking lot has twenty-four parking spaces. Andy Glazer knows this. He knew this coming in. He, he got the four houses approved and he was happy with a sixty-seat restaurant with this accessory barn for community functions. We're all happy with that. Nobody contemplated another restaurant, a full-on event venue with live and amplified music. Again, it has twenty-four parking spaces. The aerial you can see, you can argue if there's a car off or not. It, it only parks forty-five cars, right? There's a plan they're representing. It, it actually can valet sixty-five. It does not valet sixty-five. It is a forty-five cars, right? So that's why they need twenty to thirty cars up at the guild. And/or that's why they're spilling into the street on River Road. They're spilling into the setback. Uh, there's a setback all around the property that was originally approved in oh eight, which is a recorded map from planning and zoning in oh eight that needs to hold up. And the application's asking to park cars in the setback. Cars were never parked on the street. They were never parked in the setback. The old Silvermine Tavern, the old maps show it. It's a part of what I sent in today. So that the reality is, oh, and by the way, the, the tavern to open up has twenty employees. So you're talking about twenty employees plus ninety-seven people seats and which is really a hundred and forty seats. This site is so overcapacity already that to contemplate an event barn on top of that without any proper enforcement is really just irresponsible. So again, you've seen all the notes from the neighbors. There's, there were twenty letters sent in, you know, and they were all their own letters. Nothing was created. We didn't create anything. These letters are all concerned about parking and traffic on the street and loud noise and they're worried about the septic being blown out. Those are just real, those are realities. So that's, that's what's important for us is that, that we support the tavern. Ninety-seven people, great. You got the septic to support it. You want to use the barn for limited events that are tied to the tavern? That's okay. You want to do yoga? You want to do a, you know, ceremony in the barn with, with acoustical instruments? I think that's reasonable and I, and I've always told Andy that. I've, it, it was always about intensity and he knows this. Uh, and he even sent me that email saying, listen, Pete, you gotta live in peace. No more amplified music because it our windows shake and my kids can't do their homework. They gotta get up for the S A Ts. We have sports tournaments on the weekends and the, the music is thunderous and my, and my windows rattle. I know you had a couple of comments from neighbors who are close allies of Andy who say they don't hear anything. Okay, I understand that. I get it. But I live here and I've measured it and it is incredibly loud. And I would say to the commission, would you want any commission to put a full-on live amplified event barn thirty feet from your house and your family? I, you know, I, I, I'd ask that. So uh, and with that, the residential noise ordinance. So I know it's in my letter, but I gotta touch on it because nobody wants to talk about noise. Um, but I spoke with Eric Zwelling who did the Norwalk noise ordinance and we did the whole overview and he says, this is ridiculous. It's a residential zone and the residential noise ordinance absolutely would need to apply, which is four times less than what Lisa stating of sixty, which is South Norwalk type noise. This is a residential neighborhood and, and then the, the difference logarithmically of sixty D Bs versus forty-five D Bs is incredible. So, so, you know, i- if anything happens in the barn, which is great, and we do support the right reasonable limits to the barn, which I think Andy can work through and have the dance party in the tavern and he can have the music in the tavern. We're okay with that because that's historically where it was. This barn is brand new. It's not a historic structure. It was never entitled to any special uses that were always there. It's a new barn. And so to have live and amplified music all of a sudden show up in a residential neighborhood thirty feet from us is just not viable. And, and I think you asked maybe Tammy or one of the commissioners asked about is the barn insulated? Eric Zwelling went deep into it saying to insulate this barn, you would need to create a, it's sound studio and a cocoon of, of sound. Of sound uh elements to not have. The neighbors hear the sound and that would just ruin the effects of the whole barn as it was, which I don't think anybody would do that. So it's just unrealistic to have an event with amplified music in a resident essential zone. So um so that's our noise piece. Um again, I I I think I'll just go to what I would say is is reasonableness here. Uh the community, you read in all of their letters, all twenty-plus letters, everybody says they love gray barns and everybody loves Silvermine, we all do and nobody's against events. We just want reasonable events that are limited in capacity, that can park. And that the septic won't get blown out and that the noise is reasonable for all of us, especially those who live close by. So thank you very much.
Uh next we'll go to Mike Charlton.
Thank you, guys, thanks for staying up late for this. Uh I did write a letter, I'll uh skip over a lot of that other than, you know, I'm obviously very supportive of the way. Gray barns and the mercantile and the barn really revitalized the neighborhood. Uh you've heard everyone else talk about the increase in property values. And the vibrancy that it brings to the neighborhood too, it draws a lot of people here, it's super important. Um I will contradict some of what you heard tonight, given. If if the previous speaker is thirty feet, that means I'm two feet, I am by far the closest house to the barn. And I can tell you in my three and a half years here, I've never been bothered by noise. I don't hear the noise when I go to sleep, I don't have to talk over it, it doesn't shake my windows. The parking's not a problem, it's super efficient, it works, it's the same parking today than it's been forever, I don't understand. You know, the numbers that were being thrown out from twenty-four to thirty-something to sixty, it is what it is and. There's capacity for that, yeah, I I've watched the septic get changed and. Brought the code and I understand, you know, all that stuff is necessary, but I I just don't understand. Uh the animosity coming towards trying to. Uh come to a good mutual agreement here where you have a win-win for the neighborhood and for gray barns. Um it seems easy, I will, I will contradict what you heard from attorney Green earlier and that I also tried to broker. Um conversations between the neighbors and they said no. So there there might be some sour grapes there, there might be. Some inconsistent facts in in what other people said which were facts, but I'm I'm here to tell you as the closest guy to the barn. All this stuff just seems like a no-brainer to me with appropriate limits. That I think you've heard raised by multiple people tonight, so. Um I don't have much more to add to that other than, you know, it's been uh. You know, a delightful thing for this neighborhood, we're all benefiting from it. Uh we should work together to all get on the same page. Uh to enable gray barns to continue to to provide not only. Um the Silvermine District as a as a sought-after address. Um but also to continue to draw people here from all over the world. Um to eat, to sleep, to walk, to jog. Uh it's really changed things and and I think, you know, the job of the zoning commission is obviously a hard one, but. Um but I I just encourage you not to get wrapped up in in some of the things you heard tonight, which were inconsistent, so. I appreciate the audience, um I know it's late, ten-thirty. Uh it's just four and a half hours for us too, um but thank you so much and I'll sign off with that.
Uh next we'll go to Beverly Wright.
Hi, thank you, um I just wanted to begin by saying that I know attorney Green wanted to um continue to speak. May I pass to him and then come back, is that, is that permitted? Uh my name, uh this is Beverly Wright speaking, sorry, I live at uh one C River Road.
I think that's fine, yeah, uh if he got cut off, he can wrap up, that'd be fine.
Okay, so over to attorney Green and then I'll come back.
Back to attorney Green.
Hey, thank you, sorry for the confusion. So uh a couple of initial remarks, uh. Uh in terms of the applicant, uh in their application, they speak to an increase in property values. Uh while gray barns ad- admittedly is an asset in the community and has enhanced the community. I think the chart that was provided is sort of also lacking in detail because obviously it doesn't provide. Any measure of the background increase in properties and just really compares assessments over ten years without. Uh establishing any sort of baseline as to how all properties increased in value, so I wouldn't. Uh get too involved with that. Uh the last speaker made reference to improvements to the septic plan. As uh Mr. Kleppen can confirm, there is not presently a valid permit for that. Because the documents upon which it was based are, there's a long history, but the. Dot the easement uh that allows a connection between the tavern and the barn property for septic is uh. There is presently not an accurate instrument that provides for that and I would suggest that. The permit is a nullity at this point, once again, there were no permits for the use of the barn over the last several years. Uh and one of the concerns is, again, let's talk about parking. Uh first of all, the parking calculation that the applicant has provided, besides having the mathematical error in it. Um curiously, the applicant uses uh the measurement for traffic as a place of assembly. Which seems uh which would suggest that. This commission should find that reasonable parking for a barn that could accommodate up to ninety-seven people. Uh based on the applicant's request, only needs three parking spaces. So obviously, that's really unreasonable and there are so many other uses. In section four-point-three-point-twelve-B-one. That provide a more accurate um calculation of parking that might be considered, for example, a theater. Um or uh uh I'll just go through a couple of them. Uh restaurant and frequently, the applicant is suggesting that this uh would be used, for example, as a restaurant. And if guests are seated at a restaurant, uh it probably mimics very closely guests seated at a wedding. For a restaurant, it would be one per one hundred square feet of total usable area, obviously that's far more than three parking spaces. Um religious facilities, for example, require uh one for every forty square feet of seating area. So if they're having some sort of a presentation or a concert, it would probably be akin to, I suppose, sitting in a religious institution. And this commission says you need one space for every forty feet. Amphitheater, there was reference made to having a concert. There it's uh one per two seats or one per twenty square feet of standing area. So if it was being used uh for a concert with standing or seating, obviously, that requires a lot more parking. A performing arts theater is one per forty square feet. Uh so uh it's clear that the commission in crafting the regulations that you have recognized. That it one per five hundred feet of floor area is just really an unreasonable position. For the applicant to take in presenting a parking plan to this commission and it's not realistic. Uh there's this discussion of valet parking. And I guess there has been valet parking, but the fact of the matter is valet parking was allowed when you establish this overlay district. But there were some qualifiers and at the time it was, for example. Uh your regulations require that valet parking must be one acre, it has to be a one-acre parcel. And parcels defined as a defined piece of land, as you can see from the survey. The only area for parking is this condominium unit, which is a defined area of land. Uh and it is not one acre, so therefore the valet, the proposed valet parking area is not uh zoning compliant. The applicant seems to be suggesting, based on one of the drawings I saw, but once again, there's no site plan. But one of the drawings, the applicant is suggesting a more uh to expand its parking uh on that site. And I would suggest that uh right now it's non-conforming and that would be an expansion of a non-conforming use. And by the way, the applicant has no right to valet park because the regulation specifically requires. That a document be recorded in the land records that establishes permitted valet parking. And to my knowledge, no such document exists, so that valet parking plan, there there apparently is no recorded valet parking plan at this point. Uh use of off-site parking. Uh the regulations clearly provide or require that the off-site parking must be within six hundred feet. Uh if there was some reference to the art center being used. Uh the applicant has not demonstrated that that is within six hundred feet, it is not within six hundred feet, we verified that. But in order to use off-site parking, this commission would have had to adopt a approved and recorded plan. So you might request of the applicant to produce that. Uh that recorded and approved plan as you consider this application because among the other. Uh among the other requirements for special permit, there can be no zoning violations on the site. And if they're using off-site parking outside of the parameters of the regulations, then uh you can't grant the special permit anyway. Uh there's the notion of pervious surface. Uh right at the moment, you have uh some robust parking regulations and you drafted some, I think, really sensible regulations that. Uh assure that parking is provided in an orderly way and in an attractive way. Uh and in a regulated way, the only regulation uh pertaining to Silvermine in terms of the parking. Generally, in addition to under certain circumstances, valet, is that pervious surface be used and. Uh other than that, your regulations say that when they, regulations are not superseded. By these overlay district regulations, that your regular uh regulations apply. And uh I would suggest that there are several regulations in your in your parking regulations. That would apply to this lot that don't exist and the lot does not comply with your parking regulations. Uh other than perhaps this exception for pervious surface, I would suggest that pervious surface is something that isn't. Really specifically defined in your regulations, but. A site plan would have, for example, uh required drainage and required protections to assure. That natural resources, wetlands, watercourses and the like are protected. Uh I can, as you can see from the plan at present. And if you had a site plan, you would see that some of the parking is less than or within forty feet of the septic area. Uh within fifty feet of wetlands and in the upland review area, seventy feet or so from the river. And you don't have any sort of stormwater treatment in that area and the applicant is proposing to park. Sixty, I I I'm not sure because I haven't seen a firm parking plan with sixty-five cars or some number of cars. And as you know, from the many, many applications you've heard in the past, cars um leak oil. Cars uh drop metals and your regulations are very robust in requiring stormwater treatment for parking lots. This is an area that requires the highest level of protection and yet there is no. There's no site plan that shows stormwater treatment on the site and yet the applicant seems to be wanting to expand this non-conforming lot. Uh and again, all of the efforts you went to for parking lots and their appearance. Uh are basically ignored here. Uh there's also the notion of and. Of overburdening the use of the driveway of the condominium association, I note that the condominium association is not a party to this application. And yet cars are proposed to have ingress and egress over the driveway, common driveway of a condominium association with no apparent authority. Uh under your regulations, uh noise. Uh once again, the underlying district is the CD one L. And under your regulations, that is defined specifically as being. Uh a residential district, your noise ordinance establishes uh regulations for. Uh well, not your regulations, I'm sorry, the town noise ordinance establishes standards. The, I would suggest that the um study is really. Uh not well-conceived because while it does, it it seems to only address live music. It doesn't address the other impacts of using this barn for potentially ninety-seven people. What happens at nine o'clock at night or ten o'clock at night? Uh when one, when an event ends and the world rolls out of the barn, when the music stops or. Uh everyone rolls out of the event, what is the impact on my client's property and other properties in the neighborhood? Of having a crowd and the the noise study doesn't even address that in any meaningful way. What is the impact of parking whatever the number of cars were, I I'm not even sure anymore. Uh sixty-five spaces, the applicant alleges. What is the impact on neighboring properties of a wedding or a function ending at ten o'clock? Uh potentially and everyone getting into their cars and or the, I suppose. A valet running back and forth and uh removing sixty-five cars from this uh. Uh jammed-up lot for people who are then waiting to get into their cars, what's the impact? What is the impact about people, about people waiting, potentially outside, people coming and going? And I would note that the uh parking study that the applicant provided should be of concern. Because we believe it exceeds the ordinance, but under the best, best, best case. Oh, actually, it exceeds the, it exceeds the ordinance, but it, the study would suggest that because they meet the limit. Right down to the last decibel, that this commission should consider it and uh. I would suggest that that is problematical. Uh just give me one moment. I think that uh. The uh I I think with that, I'm gonna rest, but I I have more, but I'm just not sure that. I can support it without having the site plan present, once again. We look forward, we would welcome the opportunity to try to resolve many of these issues, but uh and I I just uh. Look, it is once again balancing sort of the peaceful use and enjoyment of properties. Uh with the uh this commercial use, it is always tough with tran- the transition between sort of these. Quayside commercial uses and residential uses. Uh I uh urge the commission to really think about it and think about uh your neighborhood and what the impacts are. Uh and I think that the applicant talked about um not uh resisting some of the suggestions by staff. And I would like to, I should acknowledge that Mr. Kleppen has been very patient with my clients and with me. And has provided information and met with us, but I think that many of the uh. Uh suggestions that he had made uh conditions uh have merit in terms of. Um limiting the size, limiting the number of events and potentially, I think it might be an interesting idea. To to the, if, once we get to a place where this application can be approved, to put a sunset clause in. That enables this commission to revisit this in, say, a year to see really what is going on in the neighborhood. Uh and uh you might, I would suggest that whenever we get to that place. I would suggest that live music is not something for the start, that should be allowed. Or uh live or amplified music is something that should be allowed and really, it should be seeing what the impacts are of allowing. An event with ninety-seven people alone on the neighborhood and see what people have to say. on the neighborhood and see what people have to say in a year. So uh, once again, I'm gonna renew my request. And this is really for the benefit of the applicant as well. But certainly for the benefit of the commission, that the applicant be put to the task of providing the information that this commission reasonably needs to exercise the jurisdiction vested in you. I wanna thank you for your patience in hearing me. I wanna uh, and again, thanks staff and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I think we'll go back to Beverly. She's potentially the speaker for tonight.
Great. This is Beverly Wright. I moved to Silver Mine in twenty sixteen. And I live in a condominium, the condominium that the barn is a part of at address one C River Road. And thank you for sticking with us tonight and thank you for letting me speak. I support the tavern and its revitalization, but I'm not able to support the Gray Barnes application. It would allow a party barn or destination events venue where events could take place simultaneously, as you've heard from Attorney Feinberg, at the tavern, the barn and the mercantile. The use of three structures simultaneously has a much different community consequence than previous barn events. Ninety-seven guests could move between three buildings. And I wonder, to ensure safety, would the, this planned or possible strolling between buildings require closure of the three impacted streets, which would be River, Perry and Silver Mine? To us, that's a, that's a big crowd of people and those are public streets. The community should be told if that's the case. And that would give us time to respond. And that should all be before the commission votes, in my view. The applicant also seeks permission to be allowed to play amplified music at commercial decibel levels. Now Attorney Feinberg suggested that maybe they would withdraw that, but let me just finish making the point, the major concern, should that remain a condition, um, uh, something that the applicant receives, is you'd have three simultaneous venues creating uh, using commercial deci- decibel levels. And that would create what I think of as a worrisome sonic landscape. Sort of a wall of sound caused by the vibration of amplified music. I think that's a substantial concern in a small community like this, and it wouldn't now be from one source, it would be from three. Zoning indicated that traffic backups are not a significant concern. But what I see is that backups occur frequently on weekends and holidays and are a major community complaint, as you undoubtedly saw in the letters. These backups can take many minutes to clear and could easily jeopardize the community's access to emergency services. Do not put the community at risk in that way. I question whether the existing parking lot could park large events. If not, leftover cars would line the street contributing to backups. The applicant uses good valets, but their ability to reduce backups is limited. In fact, the valet service itself is a contributor to backups. It largely blocks one lane of traffic. The police, of course, could clear backups, but I have never seen that occur. When a policeman is on site, he sits in his vehicle. Adhering to the tavern's ninety-seven person septic cap is a must for the community and will take close coordination between health and zoning. I also think that uh, some of the comments I've heard this evening about ninety-seven have been, I believe, um, inaccurate. Uh, that eighty, ninety-seven, if we come back with information that Attorney Green has suggested should be defined, because I believe there's a different definition for ninety-seven relative to the world of septic and health. And a, a different definition for people like us who are looking at, at bodies at the tavern. Ninety-seven at septic doesn't equal necessarily the number of bodies in the tavern. So that's just something that I would ask be checked and, and shared with everybody. But using the ninety-seven as a cap takes me back to the point that exceeding that cap would be a substantial risk. We all recognize that, I, I know. A risk to the community and to the environment. And also, please note that guests in the barn, as has been mentioned, would utilize porta potties, which would be damaging visually and from an olfactory basis to the community. I wonder how many porta potties in Norwalk are used by buildings as their permanent waste solution. In conclusion, I think that the application raises serious issues and compliance matters which have not been sufficiently addressed. Attorney Green has said that very eloquently, I think. Events should be scaled down, in my view, in size and in frequency. And although Attorney Feinberg mentioned this might be a nonstarter, I think the annual renewal of permits should be used to provide the community with better protection from noncompliance or slow enforcement. Thank you. And I, again, I appreciate you serving Norwalk and I especially appreciate zoning and health, who've always been there when we had questions. Thank you very much.
Uh, is there, is anyone else would like to speak? Raise your hand or I'll leave it to uh, you, Ms. Wells, if you'd like to continue the hearing or what would you like to do?
Uh, I think at this point, we should continue the hearing. Uh, it's really late. We can't really make a final decision tonight. We'd be here till, you know, one o'clock in the morning. So I think we should continue the hearing until our next meeting.
There's still a hand raised on my screen. Brian, can you see that?
That's Andy Glazer.
Madam Chair, I think that Mr. Glazer would uh, like to address the commission if, if you would allow him to.
I think he needs to wait until the rebuttal. You know, I think that's the procedure. We, we, are we finished with the uh, with all of the speakers? All of the public participation and we're going to the rebuttal now, Brian?
Uh, yeah, that's what I think maybe we should just clarify. Is there anyone? I know Brian had asked, is there anybody from the public that wanted to speak? We could do that next time. If not, you could, you know, at that point, not do the rebuttal tonight and then do that at your next meeting, but that would conclude the public um, portion of, of that. My two cents would be also have uh, Attorney Feinberg, um, just, I think Attorney Green raised the question of the site plan submittal, which I think we should just discuss tonight. Other than that, I think we could limit other comments. And, you know, not stay later than we need to.
Is there anybody who is from the public who is, who wants to speak tonight?
Yeah.
You're not from the public, Andy. Brian, is there anybody with that hand raised from the?
So, um, are we, are we concluding the meeting, Galen? That's what we're figuring out now.
Guys.
If there's nobody further from the public that wants to speak, we can continue the hearing till our next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Where we will have, now Steve suggests we discuss the uh, issue of site plan.
Yeah, well, that's not fair.
Andy, please hold on for a second, please. Thanks. Yeah, my only point was that Attorney Green had raised a question of whether that was um, required to be submitted and I, I, I read through the text and I, and I wanted to, and I sent it over to Brian and he chose to look, but.
I'm happy to address that, Mr. Kleppin, if you'd like.
I think that's a good idea because that could determine just what hap, happens tonight and what happens next, uh, next meeting.
Sure. Madam Chair, is that okay?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, um, you know, Steve, you, you know, we spoke about this at the onset when we were talking about what applications to file and, and we agreed that there is an existing valid approved site plan for this property and that this application was very specific to what took place within the four corners of the barn. That structure is there. There's no question that it was approved to be constructed there. That is not on the table. The only question out there was what could take place within those walls? And so that's a use issue. That's a special permit use issue. It's very, very specific. The things that, you know, uh, Attorney Green brought up related to drainage and um, even the crosswalks. I mean, drainage comes into play during a site plan application when you're constructing a structure, which we are very much not doing. The porta potties are temporary. They are not permanent structures. They do not require any sort of drainage. Um, and the crosswalks are in a, a city street. So that is not part of our site plan application. That is an improvement that the city has asked the applicant to uh, pay for. So uh, it, it's not, it's not part of a site plan. Um, lighting, the, the building is there. All of those things are there. So I would suggest to you all that that is a distraction um, and not at all central to what we are here to discuss, which is the use. The other thing that I'll say, sorry, is that Mr. Kleppin absolutely has the right uh, under your regulations to review what is submitted and determine uh, whether it's complete and that took place.
Thank you. Okay, so. I think we need to continue the hearing.
Uh, Galen, I'll, I'll move that we continue the hearing to our next meeting.
Good. Thank you. Is there, is there a second to that motion?
Yes.
Shayman seconds the motion and we.
Just quickly for, so for the record, that would be continuing the hearing to the May twenty-first, twenty twenty-five meeting.
Yes.
Will we continue to accept letters and public comments until a certain date and time? Will people be able to comment at that public hearing who didn't speak tonight? Or is it starting with the rebuttal?
Yes.
That was not a yes or no question.
My understanding is we then start with the rebuttal. Because the.
Want it clear for the record.
Is that your understanding, Steve, that we would then begin with the rebuttal?
Yeah, I, I think the way I took, you had asked the public again if anybody wished to speak and no one raised their hand at that juncture. So my understanding would be that is you've closed the, the public comment period, did, if you wanted to keep it open for written correspondences till that next meeting, I guess you could. I, I, I mean, I don't know what else there is to be said at this point. I think that, you know, the, the issues are, are pretty clear in terms of the, what the neighbors impacts or the neighbors' concerns about impacts are. So I think that's out there. So I don't know what additional information would be pertinent at this point in time. I think you just have to let the applicant respond to the, the comments that were made and then, you know, go through your exercise of determining whether you feel the use and change in regulations is appropriate or not appropriate.
Mr. Kleppin, if I can, and Madam Chair, I'm sorry for interjecting, but I just wanna uh, also state that I am happy and I plan to submit the slides that I used tonight. None of that was new information. Um, it was all in the record already and had already been articulated in our application materials. But I will um, submit those slides so they can be posted.
And uh, Mr. Glazer, you will have an opportunity to speak at the rebuttal.
Okay, uh, it's, I must tell you, it's a little frustrating because facts were stated that our statements were made that were not factual and.
That's what the point of the rebuttal.
I understand, Steve. Okay, all right.
Okay.
Yeah, Galen, do we wanna get the?
We need to vote on this. Uh, we have a motion and we have a second. So.
Point of clarification.
Continuing this public hearing until the May twenty-first meeting signify by raising your hand.
Can I ask a question first or do I have to wait until the, the vote?
You could ask a question first.
Okay, thank you. Are we just not hearing the rebuttal this evening because of the late hour?
Yes.
That's, that's.
Is that?
That's not right.
Is there a mute button that the host has?
Yeah.
Pardon me? Yes, because. By the time we have the rebuttal and by that time we discuss the, you, you know, it'll be another hour and a half. We'll be here till twelve thirty. And at this point, I don't think any of us are thinking very clearly.
No.
You know.
I have an early morning. I'm exhausted.
We can be much fairer to Mr. Glazer and much fairer to the, everyone who spoke at the public hearing. If we're not exhausted, in my opinion.
Thank you. I just wanted clarification. Thank you.
All right, Madam Chair, can we call the question?
Yes, yes. Let's all vote on, we have a motion on the floor to continue the public hearing until May twenty-first. All those in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay, so I think that, that seems to be unanimous.
And that meeting will be at six P M via Zoom, Madam Chair?
Yes, yes, it will. At six P M via Zoom.
Thank you all. We really appreciate your time. I know it's, it's quite late, so.
Okay, I think we should move outright straightforward to adjournment. We can approve the, the minutes of these previous meetings.
Can I, Galen, can I make one suggestion for our, we have our text amendment? Can we just open the hearing and immediately continue it to the May twenty-first meeting to save us all a legal notice rep publication?
Oh, sure. You, for the, okay. So our next matter is twenty twenty-five dash oh eight R. Planning and zoning commission zoning re- regulation text amendments. And I won't be.
No, you don't need to read it all.
And we will open that hearing. And then we will postpone that hearing until the twenty-first of May as well.
All right, again, I, I move we postpone the hearing until.
Yes, thank you, thank you. And again, seconds. And now everybody in favor of postponing that hearing, raise your hand. Okay.
Thank you.
And will, will we hear the application that we just continued, not the zoning text change, but the other application first in the agenda? Or will they wait until the end?
I hope we do it first.
Okay, great.
So that we, you know, can give it a good hearing that Mr. Glazer could have an opportunity to speak. And we'll remember what was said at this meeting. So his response will be um, pertinent. You know.
Yeah, we do. There are um, there are two extensions of time that are proposed if you wanted to hear those first to get them out of there. But that, other than that, unless there's anything administrative, everything else can wait till after this is continued.
Two extensions of time?
Yeah, if you wanted just to get those out of the way first, it's good. Otherwise, they, they would be like two minutes each. More than likely, or we can just do this and then they can wait. It's fine.
At our next meeting, not tonight.
We're all ready for bed.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion to adjourn, all those.
I second.
Okay.
Nice.
Say aye.
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 Okay. Thank you very much, you guys.
Yeah.